Check one, two. Check one, two. Check one, two, three.
All right. 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 Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, August 24, 2023, regular meeting of the Walnut Creek Planning Commission. At this time, I'll ask our Commission Secretary Andy Smith to please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Reiser?
Here.
Commissioner Needing?
Here.
Commissioner Lezak?
Here.
Commissioner Pickett?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Vice Chair Strongman?
Here.
Chair Ward?
Here.
All members are in attendance.
Great, thank you very much. Next up, we have item two, which is the consent calendar. We actually have one item on the consent calendar, so I have to ask, does any commissioner wish to pull this item for discussion? No, all right. So seeing none.
Any member of the public?
Yeah. Does any member of the public wish to comment on the item which is on the consent calendar? So this is the Walden Garden Town Homes tentative map to your extension request. It is not anything else that is on the agenda or anything else not on the agenda, only that item. So would anybody like to comment on that? Is there anybody online who is interested in commenting on this?
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
So I would ask if any member of the public is attending via Zoom, if they would like to comment on this item, please press the raise hand button and we'll let you in. And I'm not seeing anybody.
Great, thank you. All right, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commission Secretary, can you please record the vote?
Yes, Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Needing?
Yes.
Commissioner Lezak?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Strongman?
Yes.
And Chair Ward?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Okay, great. Our next, our next item is public communication. This is the portion of the meeting that is reserved for comment on items which are not on the agenda. So this means comments which are not about the Spoon Tonic Lounge Conditional Use Permit or the SB 9 ordinance. Under the Brown Act, the Commission cannot act on items raised during public communications but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. Request clarification or refer the item to staff. Additionally, I would like to remind everyone that not all speech is protected and I will not tolerate or allow hate speech during public comment at any meeting that I chair. Hate has no place in our community and our words must reflect our community commitment to equality and inclusion for all. So that being said, are there any members of the public who would like to address the Commission at this time?
And again, I would note, anybody attending via Zoom, if you wish to provide public comments on items not on the agenda, please press the raise hand button. And not seeing anybody.
Okay, great. All right, so next, moving right along here, our next item is public hearings. And I'd like to start by asking if any members of the Commission have had any ex-party communications relating to any items on tonight's agenda. I'm seeing only shaking heads indicating no. So with that, we'll move on to the first item of public hearing. That is the Spoon Tonic Lounge review of the deemed approved status and conditional use permit for the sale and service of alcoholic beverages. Its applications numbers Y 09-042 and Y 00-113, location 2580 North Main Street. And we'll start with a staff presentation by Chip Griffin, Principal Planner.
Thank you Chair Ward, Planning Commission. My name is Chip Griffin, Principal Planner here with Community Development Department, Walnut Creek. I'm here tonight to present Spoon Tonic Lounge Review, a review of their deemed approved status and their conditional use permit under application numbers Y 00113 and Y 09042. Is that not moving ahead? There we go. Okay. So the, what's the ask? The ask here tonight is for review and operation of the Spoon Tonic, Spoon Tonic Lounge for conformance with their deemed approved performance standards. Take public testimony, modify and make written findings and modify Spoon Tonic's CUP to bring them into conformance with their deemed approved standards and CUP conditions of approval. It's just not working. There we go. All right. Back, a little background, Spoon Tonic Lounge is located at 2580 North Main Street. It's in the lower portion of a split level commercial building with the, with a restaurant on the ground or the main street level floor, main street level of the building that I guess would be the upper level. It operates under a type 48 ABC license, has an occupancy around 90, and they're open seven days a week till 2:00 AM. Although there are two CUPs, and in the entitlement history, you can see that they've been granted two CUPs in 2001 and 2009. And then in the advent or the, the adoption of ordinance 2109, they were, they were considered deemed approved as were restaurants and bars in the city. Although there are two CPs, for ease of reference, they're best characterized as one CUP with two elements, with the two elements that are collectively referred to as the CUP. The conditions of approval set forth in both CUPs are still applicable. The deemed approved performance standards differ from CUP conditions in that they are general in nature, can be applied to all alcoholic beverage establishments equally, and focus on nuisance and criminal activity that may be associated with alcoholic beverage sales instead of land use. Existing establishments operating pursuant to a CUP like Spoon Tonic continue to have, continue to have to operate pursuant to the conditions of their CUP as well as the deemed approved performance standards. All right. Little context, let's see, now is when I need this. As you can see, this is northbound North Main Street. This is SOS Drive right here. And as you can see, here is our, our parcel. It's the land use designation is service commercial as is the zoning designation. And here's an aerial of the same. Here's the, here's the site right there. And we can look a little closer. Off of Main, Spoon Tonic has access from SOS Drive in this fashion, following the yellow arrow up into, up across a private drive. And this would be their, considered their parking lot in the, in the rear of the, in the rear of the lot. This arrow would point to their main entrance, and it's down, you know, below the Soror Indian Restaurant. And as, that's, that's their, their main and as far as I know, only entrance. And you can see down here, this is what it looks like from, from North Main. This is a Soror Restaurant and Spoon Tonic can be accessed from this driveway as well. And it's right up there, it's a steep grade that goes downwards. These are the deemed approved performance standards. An alcoholic beverage establishment shall retain its deemed approved status only if it conforms to all of these deemed approved performance standards. We will take a look at the considerations for these standards that the Planning Commission can, can make in a minute after we discuss some of the police activity and violations that have occurred since 2021. Here's a table. The table shows by year, by year across the top and the type of violation that they are and the number of occurrences during that year and all. There was 39 total calls for service. I'd like to point out that 87% of those calls, and mostly the, the real serious ones, occurred after 11:00 PM. The asterisk in line under gun, gun possession would say that there were seven guns recovered over those events. And there, and there's a combination of these violations have occurred or resulted in multiple arrests. If we look at it, drilling down a little bit, new violations, looking at occurrences from from year to year, in March twenty-one, there was twelve incidents of fights, alcohol sales, the minors, public intoxication, drug sales and sexual assault. And, and the most serious offense that occurred was a homicide. There was a quadruple shooting, which led to one person being deceased. In twenty twenty-two, there were fights, public intoxication, brandishing of weapons, knives and guns, DUI, assault with a deadly weapon, weapon in possession of a firearm. And then this year, there was public intoxication, possession of firearms, assault, fights and possession of cocaine for sale. The Planning Commission may use all of the evidence on record and may use these standards referred earlier to as the considerations for the performance standards to decide whether the establishment has violated their deemed approved performance standards. The staff report includes an explanation of how they do not demonstrate compliance with the deemed approved performance standards. As well with the CUP, in addition to finding, as well, along with the deemed approved, in addition to finding the violation of deemed approved performance standards, the Planning Commission may use additional considerations in making a finding that an establishment is in violation of their CUP as well. We have listed these two relevant considerations here. I believe there are four or five, and they need to be in violation of just one, and that is outlined in your staff report. Staff, including... Staff, including the Community Development Department, the Police Department, and the City's Attorney's Office, has set forth these findings for the Planning Commission's consideration. And with that, staff would make a recommendation, due to the severity and long-term ongoing nature of the violations of the deemed approved performance standards and CUP conditions of approval described in the report in your hands and in this presentation, and given that most of the serial, serious criminal activity occurs after eleven PM, staff recommends that the Planning Commission move to adopt the draft, draft resolution modifying Spoon Tonic's CUP by limiting the hours of operation to eleven PM, seven days a week, as well as imposing any other necessary and appropriate conditions on their operation. This modification will allow Spoon Tonic to maintain their deemed approved status and their CUP to sell alcohol, and with some added limitations, of course. These modifications would not affect Spoon Tonic's ability to have live entertainment. And I would like to point out that, that any decision made here by the Planning Commission tonight is appealable within ten days of, of the mailing of the resolution or the decision out to the applicant. Any interested person may appeal there, this decision or a Planning Commission decision to the City Council by filing a notice of appeal with the City Clerk. Are there any questions of staff? And I'd like to point out that we have Captain Andy Brown, Lieutenant Bruce Jower, and Kamia Mahalati from the City Attorney's Office to answer any questions you might have. If not, the applicant would like to make a presentation as well.
Okay, thank you very much for that excellent presentation. Now is the time, we have questions from the Commission. We'd like to start. All right, Vice Chair Strongman was quick on the draw here, so you're up.
More for my clarification education, we have the CUPs, CUP and the deemed status. Which controls, which ones, if, if the CUP says you could do this, how, how does that balance out, I guess?
Well, they, they do, they do two, two different things. The, the deemed approved status is more of general in nature, in nature. And it applied to only those restaurants that were, that were in operation prior to the adoption of, I believe it was ordinance twenty-one oh nine in two thousand twelve. What it did is it added more performance standards for the operation of such, of such establishments, where the conditional use permit is, is their, their permit to operate.
Okay, thank you.
I would add, they're of equal weight from the standpoint that if there are restrictions in the deemed approved performance standards and restrictions or rules in the CUP, they both govern, and if there were to be any conflict, the most restrictive provision would apply.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other questions, Commissioner Strongman? No, okay. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you. I understand that there were several letters that were sent to the, the owners or the managers of the lounge to bring to their attention the concerns of the, the city or the police with the activities going on there. Can you guys give a little, little summary of that and what the response was to those letters?
Well, I have the author of those letters here, and he could probably give you more detail than I could.
Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Bruce Jower. I'm a lieutenant with the Police Department. I'm also the watch commander of Sector Two that oversees the same area where Spoon Tonic Lounge is located. So yes, I authored three letters to Spoon Tonic Lounge. They were directed to the owner Ajit, and I apologize if I don't pronounce the last name correctly, but is Adawalia? Adawalia? Those three letters stemmed around activities throughout a specific time period explaining police response. And with those letters, I would advise that the police had responded to these incidences. We would talk over the phone about remedies and how to prevent further police response and how to maintain further order and management of public safety during the operations of Spoon Tonic's Lounge during certain time periods. And I would have that conversation with Mr. Ajit over the phone before sending those letters to him. So these conversations were at had before these letters were sent. So that's how they were notified.
And, and what was the, you say there were remedies were discussed and, and actions that could be taken? What actions were taken in response to the letters?
Well, one of the reasons why we're here is because basically what we saw from a police standpoint, that there was no actions taken. We had further discussions, I've had further phone calls with both Ajit and the manager Jazz during and after certain incidences. And I would try to reach out to them, and we would have good productive conversation and how to remedy certain situations. But at the end of the day, nothing that we could see was changing. We were still responding to calls for services. The fights were still occurring. We still had response where it would require a large number of officers to, to arrive on scene just to handle certain situations. So we didn't see any change from our perspective.
Thank you.
Other questions for Lieutenant or just generally, specifically for Lieutenant? Commissioner Pickett?
Oh, actually, it's probably more for Chip than for you.
All right, while, while we have him up here, why don't we?
Okay.
Ask our questions and then avoid too much musical chairs here. Okay.
Yes, what were the remedies you suggested?
A lot of our conversation was about security, about when to call the police, when to give us a heads up on certain events. But more, more or less about when they have a problem, to give us a call, let us know what's happening so we can help be there to solve the problem. So we even had conversations, I mean, giving examples and giving, you know, suggestions on how to better run their, their, their business in terms of, you know, crowd control and just kind of tactics and we would say tactical communication that would be used by the security in order to de-escalate situations with patrons. So a lot of our conversations had, had to do with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Lieutenant Jower? Okay. Commissioner Lezak?
So, you know, a number of years ago, I sat with members of the Planning Commission and had discussion about other CUPs in Walnut Creek. And in, in that particular case, the Police Department had had similar conversations and, and that owner in response had put together, you know, like a security plan, brought in like security consultant to try to, to improve their situation, had been working closely with the Police Department, still continued to have a number of these problems, but at least showed kind of some proactive response. And then even prior to, you know, coming before the Planning Commission had presented some of that material and, and, you know, I'll ask the, the applicant to, or the, the business owner to present some of the same kind of information in response to a similar question, but did, was any of that presented to you in that formal way other than you asking these questions and, you know, over the phone? Did, did they provide any written responses to your letters? And in doing so, provide like more specific answers that might document how they were going to respond to the, the items in your letter? Was there a formal back and forth other than your phone calls?
The answer is no. There was no formal back and forth. One letter, the first letter, was responded by, at the time, their attorney, saying that they received my notification letter, they recognized the contents within the letter, and we will be willing to work with you to remedy the situation. But other than that, one follow-up letter from the Attorney's Office, there was no formal plan suggested or provided to the PD to suggest that they're working on how to improve their security. Conversations between me and Jazz, we talked about a lot of ideas, but after the conversation, there was really no further follow-up to really demonstrate their seriousness of trying to come up with a formal plan.
When, when you've worked with other businesses in the community, are those typical things that you would see from, from other establishments that would have a similar kinds of challenges? I mean, what, what is a, I don't know if it's a standard, but what, what would you see as being appropriate for a business of this type in terms of their communication with the police and, and a plan to handle these kinds of situations?
Regarding communication with the police, it's not common to have back and forth documentation or letters. We do have a monthly downtown business association and bar meeting every month where all the bar owners come and talk about issues like this, how to better their procedures and processes regarding security and serving, underserving, over-serving, staffing and all those kind of issues. And I, at the time, was the person managing our bar scene, and I would attend all those meetings. And that was a perfect forum for all the bar owners to formally talk about things like this. Specifically, at these bar meetings, we're always the same bar owners, and unfortunately, I have never seen any representation from Spoon Tonic at any of these bar meetings.
Did you suggest to them in your verbal communication that that would be an appropriate venue for them to communicate with the police? I mean, in what way were, other than general knowledge of this, in what way would they have been invited or suggested? And I mention this because for those who weren't there in the previous discussions, it was absolutely, you know, a recommendation of the police in the, in prior discussions with establishments like this, and that it seemed like that that was something that was almost a requirement of the Planning Commission in terms of conditions to move forward or repair these kinds of things. So I, I just want to understand the context of that invitation, if you will.
Yes, in fact, one of the last conversations I had with Jazz and manager, maybe about a month and a half ago, maybe two months ago, I did specifically mention, we have bar meetings, we talk about these issues specifically to similar issues that you might be experiencing regarding security and procedures. And I never see you guys there, and it should be nice, it would be nice to see your representation so we can help your business thrive in more of a positive way. And my recollection of that conversation was that he knows of these meetings, he doesn't go, and I forgot exactly his reasoning at the time, but he is aware of these meetings. And I did make sure I say, said that, yes, we still have them, he should come, it would benefit his business to do so.
So last question, so is it, is it your opinion based on your interaction, your response to these calls, that, that this has reached kind of that, that nuisance level of, of unsafe conditions for both folks in the community as well as patrons to the, to the establishment?
Yes, sir, and that's one, that's the main reason why we're here, to modify their hours to eleven o'clock.
Okay, thank you, that's all the questions I have.
Does anybody else have questions for Lieutenant Jower? Okay. Commissioner Needing?
It says here that the majority of the calls made for assistance from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three were not made by Spoon Tonic employees. May I ask, when the police had, were, sorry, can you hear me? When the police were called to the various incidents, were the Spoon Tonic employees there trying to resolve anything? Were they present? Were they aware? Because I'm assuming this is all happening in the parking lots?
Most of the stuff was happening in the parking lot. There was many incidents that started inside that traveled outside. Regarding the response before you in the report, Spoon Tonic was the reporting party about on an average of thirty-three percent of the time, whereas we would arrive on scene through other means, such as a nine one one call that came from a witness patron or a victim patron, or a, or an officer happening to be patrolling the area and on viewing a situation. So when they did call the thirty-three percent of the time, they were very cooperative, very responsive. They tried their best to work with the Police Department, and that's one thing I must add is that when we are there, when they do call, they are very cooperative with us, and they do their best to try to help us with evidence and video and stuff like that. The problem is, is that the other sixty-seven percent of the time, we are called there without their knowledge until they find out later on, or an officer patrolling the direct, the area directly observes on their own, on views a crime and has to deal with it. And on those type of calls, when we do need their assistance, they do help us out. Occasionally, there has been is one or two incidences where, when we have arrived on scene, where bartenders, not the bartenders, but members of the security was not so cooperative. In, in one instance, they actually were, was trying to help the suspect get away. And I, I believe that was in two thousand, last year in two thousand twenty-two. So more or less, yes, they help us out, they're cooperative, but there's a few instances where they have not been cooperative with us.
So, I mean, this is a bit of conjecture, but the sixty-seven percent that is in the parking lot, they have no idea that these incidents are occurring because there's no sort of cameras or anything that they know of? So that's why they have no idea what's happening outside of their establishment?
They, they know what's happening, it's just how it gets reported to us. Thirty-three percent of the time, they actually report it. When these occurrences are happening, they get involved, but we, we, we get the information from other means, it's just not by them. But they do know that these things are happening.
So no?
I would say most of the time.
No cameras that would immediately alert them to what's happening outside of there that you know of?
That I know of.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. First of all, these community bar meetings, group meetings, they're not required as a condition of the CUP or anything else, it's just a recommendation that everybody similarly situated kind of get together and talk about things, right?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, but you're always available for direct communication, whether over the phone or by written communication. Like you're, that's another avenue of communication with with you.
That's correct.
Okay, and the report seemed pretty clear, but I just wanted to confirm and clarify that this this particular establishment seems to have a very disproportionately high number of serious crime and safety issues as compared to other similar similar bars. Is that that correct as well?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, anybody else have any questions for Lieutenant Dower? All right, does anyone else have any other, thank you very much for that, appreciate that. Does anyone have any other questions for Chip or Commissioner Anderson?
All right, Chip, it looks like, you know, most of the the concern has been in the last two and a half, three years. Do you know, I mean, has there been a substantial change from previous periods?
We've asked, we've asked the the owners that that question. I mean, they've been in operation since 2001, and up until, you know, 2021, they're, you know, it's relatively a pretty calm, pretty calm establishment. I think what what happened, and the story goes, is that when with COVID, like everything else in this world, the the clientele kind of changed. And and that's when that's when these things started occurring.
Thank you.
But up but up until then, no, no, nothing that would really, you know, blip the radar at all.
Commissioner Pickett.
Yeah, a little, little bit off of the behavior issue, what is the parking requirements? I know there's other businesses down there, and there's private driveway and all that stuff. Are they allowed to park on adjoining properties down there, or is there?
That I'm I'm not sure of, I mean, they have their own parking lot. I don't know if it meets their parking requirement, and they've just been, you know, they've been there for for quite a while. The and I don't know that the parking was reviewed in 2009. I don't know if it was or wasn't. But there is, there is a private access easement between their property and SOS Drive. And I I don't know if they have a parking easement or an ease, a parking easement there. I'm sure they have an easement to access it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how about the the occupancy load? And does anybody ever check to see if they have too many people in there versus their allowed?
We don't have any reports on that, and it's it's never come up as an issue.
Okay.
PD may have more on that, any occupancy issues?
Okay.
So at one point of time, we got information of criminal activity, which sparked, the question is, how is the occupancy during normal business hours? So we asked code enforcement to do a site assessment, to walk through, to see if there is any issues with overcrowding associated to the 90% the 90% maximum occupancy level for the business. And what the code enforcement reported that there was not.
Thank you. Now, if the the staff recommendation is to modify the operation hours to 11 o'clock from, I assume it's 2 o'clock now?
2 o'clock, correct.
So we'll cut it back to 11 o'clock. And we did receive some videos from, I guess, property owners nearby. And it's pretty clear that there's a lot of activity after hours, even at 2 a.m. What what is, what is the management of the crowd after hours when they flow out of this thing? If it shuts down at 11 o'clock, then there isn't even a responsible bar owner to monitor this. You know, it's a blind spot, you can't see it from anywhere. So has any thought been given to that consequence, even if you close at 11? That the party just doesn't flow out into the parking lot and the private driveways around there?
Well, and that's that that's going to be part of the test. There the part of the, I think part of the solution is is a security detail that will keep eyes outside at all times, and especially when it's closing time, and to make sure that that occurs in a, in a, in a, you know, proper fashion. And part of that, of course, is to make sure that, you know, there's, there's, there isn't any trash or debris, cans, bottles, left behind, public urination, that kind of thing, that it just doesn't occur. And that's going to be, that's going to be part of the test.
But the bar closes, assuming employees go home? So who's who's monitoring the activity out there at 11:30?
The owner of the business.
So the, so the, is there a condition in there that says the owner or employees have to stay around and monitor it till 12 o'clock or 1 o'clock?
I don't know that we have a, we we added the standard conditions that were written for CUPs, not not for AUPs, but for CUPs in in this resolution. And I don't know if that resolution has a, has that specific condition in it. The 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 commission's welcome to add conditions.
Okay, so in light of all the thorough documentation that the police department provided, which I'm very thankful for, it was very thorough and very, you know, analytical and subjective, so that's very helpful. But considering that, and the length of the historical poor performance of their, why is staff even recommending that they stay open at an 11-hour timeframe instead of just closing? Why would we keep it open?
Well, the Planning Commission, well, the the city can take two roads, well, three roads. One is to do nothing, the other is to modify, and the other is to revoke. We 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 landed on modification because, A, they've been in operation since 2001 and done a pretty good job up until 2021. Some of their business model changed, their things, things changed there that we think can be fixed. We don't necessarily want to put them out of business, we want to see them succeed. And that's, that's, that's what our goal is, and we like to work with Spoon Tonic and and help them make sure that happens.
Okay, in my, in my 20 years, 10 year on the Planning Commission, I think we've closed down about three or four establishments with similar, maybe not even as egregious behavior, but we closed those down. Now, those were all in the downtown area, which had a more significant impact on the the public because they're right in the middle of, you know, mom and dad's taking their kids out, well, not at 1 o'clock in the morning. But anyhow, so, you know, so we've, we've taken the harsher action before on establishments that had similar type of activities. So I'm not sure that I fully understand why 11 o'clock is even a consideration. And since there's, you know, I guess some consideration would be given to, you know, the other 18 years they were operating. Okay, so I guess that's the only questions I have right now. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Any other commissioners?
Not now.
Okay, thank you very much for that excellent presentation.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing, so Spoon Tonic, a representative from them, you have 15 minutes for your presentation now.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, distinguished members of the Planning Commission. I'm Michael Biggs, I'm an attorney, and I'm representing Jazz and his father, Ajit Aluala. And they're the owners and managers. And they brought some of their employees this evening to speak to you as well. I wanted to thank the lieutenant for the wonderful two and a half hour meeting, we and eight other, was there eight people there, lieutenant? Five of us, we had an extensive meeting, the lieutenant didn't mention that. And we brought together everybody, and we brought some proposals, and we tried to find out what the heck's going on. Chip just said the place was running fine up till 2020, 20 years. Went bad, the police officer gave you all some graphs showing the crimes going down, it's dropping like a rock. Look in the last eight months. Seven incidences down, and then you take the 69 incidences total, you average that over three years, that's two a month. There's a problem here, though. We don't want to split hairs, we know what the problem is. It's the problem nobody wants to talk about. They've got the wrong crowd in there because they're playing music and they have things that are going on that are attracting a criminal element. That is already stopped. Ajit's going to come up here, Jazz is going to come up here, and they're going to explain the modifications that they're making. Different music, no DJ, no more gangster rap, that's the problem, that's what attracts the element. It just happened to go that way, it wasn't that way before, and they're going to fix it. Now, I went to the establishment yesterday, it's a small establishment, it was smaller than what I thought. And when I was meeting with the police officer and his captain and the other representatives, I thought, well, we need a big security detail there with, you know, something that's run by retired law enforcement officer. But the scale is really small. I think they could make do with a three-person security detail and perhaps make some improvements over what they have. But when Jazz comes up here, five, he'll explain the details and such, what they want to do to get on common ground with the city. They don't want this problem, they think it's a problem themselves, they hate it. They they don't like the people that are coming in there, they're ugly and they're mean, and they want them gone. Jazz was under the misnomer that he thought the police would do that for them. Well, I explained to him, the police can't clean everything up, the criminals just move around. This county is highly impacted with gang activity, it's huge in Contra Costa County. It's at a third world level, with all due respect, the statistics don't lie. And these people will simply go somewhere else, but my clients will take action to get them out of there. And they'll explain to you what they're going to do. Now, there's one thing that would hurt them bad, if they were forced to close at 11. About 70% of their revenue comes after 11. And they will respect, you know, what the Planning Commission does, I don't know if they'll appeal or not, that's something they'd have to think about. But right now, where we're all at, is we just want to solve the problem, we don't want to fight with anybody. We think it can be done, so I'd like to have, come on up. This is Ms. St. Pierre, Donnie and Danny, and and she'll introduce herself, and she'd like to, to, excuse me, lieutenant. She'd like to, she'd like to talk to you folks.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak today, my name is Dani St. Pierre. I'm the lead bartender at Spoon Tonic Lounge, I've been employed at this establishment for nine years, since April of 2014. Over the years, we have operated with little to no incident, and it wasn't until the reopening after the pandemic where we started to see a shift in our customer base and their behavior. We have communicated communicated with Walnut Creek PD every step of the way, perhaps to our own detriment at times, but we have done this to maintain the safety of our staff, our patrons, and the surrounding community. I could stand here today and tell you how much I love Spoon Tonic Lounge, how much I put into this bar and to making it better. But we are here today to determine whether or not cutting our hours to 11 p.m. would be the best decision for our business and for the community of Walnut Creek. Spoon Tonic Lounge, on an annual basis, brings in a gross revenue of almost a half million dollars, and 342,000 of that is generated between the hours of 11 p.m. and 1:30 a.m. Changing our hours would ultimately take away over 65% of our revenue, no business can survive that cost. Ultimately, changing our hours would mean certain failure to our small minority owned bar. Starting at the beginning of the year, we have made major changes, all recommended by Walnut Creek PD. With these changes, we believe we are on the right track and have seen a downtick in bad behavior. Please give us a chance to show you that our changes are working, thank you for your time and consideration.
I'd like to have Jazz come up and speak, please. Jazz is co-owner with his father, who's right there, that's Ajit.
Thank you, guys, I just want to say, I took over Spoon Tonic Lounge nine years ago. And it was smooth sailing, until the pandemic happened, everything's shifted. The the clients changed, the regulars that used to come to the bar, they stopped coming. And all these, I'm 44 now, some nights, I'm the oldest one there, and it's all younger crowd. And they don't know how to behave, they don't know how to do, they drink 1942 with pineapple juice. So that's the, the, that's the kind of crowd that's coming in. And I've had it, and whatever Lieutenant Dower suggested, start doing a cover charge. I started doing a $10 cover charge. He told me to get more security personnel on board, I got five security personnel, two outside, two inside, one floater. And he told me to do parking lot sweep, be considerate of the businesses that are around the area, and I did that. We've been doing that ever, you know, it's, it's been, we've been keeping it clean. We've been contacting Walnut Creek PD whenever it's needed. There's only so much we can do, and we're on a, I think we're doing good. And whatever is in the report, I think it's a little, little fabricated, I don't know. But it's, it's statistics wise, Retro Drunky has way more calls than we do. But we're being penalized for it, because we needed assistance from Walnut Creek PD.
Whoever you like, just come on up.
Hi, my name is Jason Arambula, I work at Spoon Tonic Lounge as one of the security guards since 2001 about. So I've been there from the beginning of the pandemic and have seen the change in the crowd. I do believe Spoon Tonic can operate at a level that we all want to see for a place in Walnut Creek. The first 18 years that you guys spoke of, a small, local place where people, a lot of the industry workers around here like to hang out at Spoons when they get off of work. The restaurant servers, the waitresses, other bars around here, I think that's a good type of place. And what's been going on, kind of the the music and the dancing, I I believe it's too much. I think that would be a nice change, I think Jazz has talked about changing that atmosphere, and that'd be a good thing for everybody. We don't want to see any problems at the bar. I love the bar, I like hanging out there, I don't want to see any problems, and I I work there. I don't know what's going to happen after this commission decides to do, but we'll accept whatever. But I think it could, changing at, closing at 11 would drastically change the ability for Spoon Tonic to stay open, I believe. Specifically with the restaurant above it, doesn't close till 10 o'clock, so we were not allowed to make any noise that would disturb the restaurant till 10. So any kind of music doesn't start until 10, they would have an hour of any kind of live entertainment or anything like that. That would affect his ability to operate. I think cutting away the DJs is a good idea. I don't think, I don't think he needs or wants a nightclub there, I don't think Walnut Creek really needs a dance club nightclub. But I think a small, local bar that doesn't have a negative impact on the community could be nice for the people that live and work here. I think that's proven over the last 18 years, and I think hopefully we can see it happen in the future. Thank you for listening to me.
Spoon Tonic is changing the venue. No more DJ, no more music that is thought to attract certain criminal elements. And that's what we think the problem has been, is the music and the dancing. And again, I point you to the police officer's statistics, incidents are going down, not up, markedly so. I think seven, look to 2022 and compare to 2023. I think seven, look to twenty-twenty-two and compare to twenty-twenty-three. Spoon Tonics is part of the community. They don't want to fight the city at all. They want to fix the problem. There may have been some misunderstandings between Ajit and the police, but they have been talking. And I think the lieutenant, if he spoke again, he would speak about the meeting we had yesterday, and I heard lots of talk in that meeting about talks that they were having. And with Ajit over there nodding his head, it isn't like they were sticking their heads in the sand. That's, I don't think the police officer intended to give that impression, but if he did, he was wrong, and I think he would clear that up. I'm confident he would. They have not been ignoring the police. That is not true. And they can't change the social problems that affect us all. Anybody in this room could be a crime victim walking out to our cars. Crime is rampant everywhere. We all have to work together. And Spoon Tonic is going to be working one hundred percent with the police department and the city to get that bad crowd out of there. Actually, they started taking action last week. They disbanded the former music they were playing. They were playing country-western, I think. They're trying different things. They're moving in good faith, but if you shut them down after at eleven, boom, there go their jobs. The income goes. Okay, well, thank you very much for listening.
There, it's three minutes still, so come on up.
My name's Glenn Panetta. I'm the lead security over at. Sorry. My name's Glenn Panetta. I'm the lead security over at Spoon Tonic. I'm aware that we are on the radar as far as like the planning commission goes, and that we do need to make some changes in the way we operate. Now, as far as our game plan goes, we have been making the changes necessary as much as we can. Obviously, the changes aren't gonna happen overnight, but with the changes we have made, things are changing slowly but steadily. Things are getting better for us as far as I can see personally. Got no problem working with law enforcement. Also, as far as like any other flaws that we got, like other, what was it? Supposedly, one of the security was working with, trying to let one of the other guys go. We have no problem getting rid of other employees that don't exactly fit our bill, so. I don't know, cutting us down to eleven o'clock, definitely gonna shut us down eventually because we definitely won't survive with those hours. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you very much. Yes, you have one minute and forty-nine seconds.
Good evening, City Council and everyone. My name is Will Bambridge. I'm actually a longtime patron and also assistant to the bar. I've definitely seen the demographics over the last five, six years in this area change quite a bit. You take a look at what happened to Krogan's in downtown, where that entire crowd dispersed, went to dance, they went to Tiki Toms, they went to Lucky's. They went further out, Massay's, Spoon Tonic. The issue is not Spoon Tonic. It is the demographics that's happening in this, like, town. You're the social center of Contra Costa. Take a look at retail crime that's happening right now. It's up eighteen percent. I work within retail. We've had to hire on additional security. This is crazy. Shutting down at two o'clock for a venue that does sixty to seventy percent of their revenue is just not right. They deserve to stay open. They have been making changes. I have seen a lot of progress. Ever since Jazz has taken over, he has changed the, like, changed the venue to be more proper for the neighborhood. He's bringing in neighborhood business. He is bringing in the folks to actually be able to come in, such as like the service and industry workers on their nights that they are coming in. They are leaving properly, like in cabs, Ubers, to get home. They are not driving drunk or anything like that. The responsibility, like after two-thirty, three o'clock, when these folks are hanging out in the parking lot, there are folks inside. They do sweep the parking lot. They do it at night and even when they open. They come in, people will actually say that they are doing a better job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so now is the time when we have questions from commissioners for Spoon Tonic and the folks that have just addressed us. Who'd like to start? Commissioner Lezak?
So my question is a little bit about kind of the program that you guys have talked about individually in different ways. And, you know, we can maybe explore this as a group after public hearing is closed, but to the degree that there's a problem, and you've talked about the things that your group has been working on solving. You know, I think the intent is that there be some kind of a program that the city, the police department understand and has communicated to them that is method of change, something that the city can follow up on to see that there's change. And so is there a way for you to articulate those changes in a meaningful way, kind of a written plan, a description of security? Because I suppose what I think the city is looking at is if there's some kind of modification to the use permit, folks would certainly like to make that a kind of a temporary condition that the establishment can sort of earn back, if you will, the right to be open later. So I'm looking for the idea of, are there some specific things that you could put down? And are you willing to do something like that to try to work toward sort of expanding hours over time? And the use permit process in the city is typically, most of these businesses start with an eleven o'clock period of time, and then they come back to the commission over time and request, hey, I've had a year of no incidents. Can I have my hours expanded, extended? That's the typical process, and because of the timing of when the use permit was originally done, this establishment didn't go through that. But I think that's kind of the direction that maybe we're gonna talk about. And my question is, are you and your client, is your client open to some program like that? That might get, give the city something meaningful to be able to track, to be able to work with you to get back to some hours that would be help, you know, that the establishment needs to be able to stay open?
Yes, I would propose a ninety-day period for Spoon Tonic to implement the changes, to change patrons, and keep the hours the same. Stay, maybe vote to curtail the hours, but then have a proviso in there that it stayed for ninety days pending study. Let them implement what they're doing, what they've told you about. The problem is a criminal element, and, you know, none of us in this room can change that. It's here. It's everywhere. It's all around us. And what a business owner can do is take proactive actions to do things that don't attract those kind of elements to their business. And they think that in light of what's going on these days, if they change by getting rid of the DJ and getting rid of the dancing and the music, that the folks that are causing problems won't come there. And I would submit to you that if I brought a criminologist here, the criminologist would corroborate what I'm saying. You talk about the roots and the causes of crime, what makes criminal elements, birds of a feather flock together, and they go to places where they can all do their thing. Well, they're over at Spoon Tonic. They've been there lately. Okay, they're gonna go somewhere else. They're gonna be somewhere else in this county. Maybe not in this town, but they will go somewhere else. It's a, it's a social-political problem that the police can't solve. You can't solve it, and Spoon Tonic can't solve it. What we can do is we can control things within our arms' grasp. And what my clients will do, they're going to do it. They're going to change the venue. But if you cut their hours, this is a business that since two thousand and one has had a property interest that's been functioning in a certain way that has given them an economic benefit. And I have here, I, you know, I'm not gonna submit them to you, but I have the charts here that show most of the income comes in the late evening. So to cut the business to eleven is to destroy the business, and you're looking at crime statistics that show that the incidences are going down. That's what the police gave you. And they also gave you statistics that show that when you take those sixty-nine incidences and you divide those over three years, you get a very low ratio. They're talking about a shooting that happened two and a half years ago. All right, so there are shootings happening in this county, you know, on a weekly basis, if not a daily basis. It's just, my clients will do things so that those activities won't be likely to be happening there by not playing the type of music they've been playing and having the DJ. That's what attracts it. And there's another element that goes there, the working people, the industry people, they go there too. But when you have the Friday night dance thing going on at one o'clock in the morning, and people are on social media, you know, and they're saying, let's go to Spoon Tonic. Well, it's for the dancing and it's the music, and it is that certain environment that's attracting a certain element. That element won't be there, but if you cut the hours to eleven now, the business likely won't be there either because by doing that, their cash flow will be cut off. Thank you. But they will work hand-in-hand with the city and continue meeting. We had a meeting yesterday. They're willing to bend over backwards and maybe be in a probationary period for ninety days. That's what I would suggest, a probationary period. Maybe have action stayed, like, you know, where you can drop the lever if you have to without an administrative process perhaps like this, but give them some time. Give them some time to implement what they're going to do. They've got a good plan.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question.
You have a question? All right, Commissioner Pickett has a question.
So I only heard three actions that are being proposed by Spoon Tonics, and one is to eliminate the DJ. Another is no dancing, is that correct?
That's right.
And the other is to change the type of music.
That's right.
Did you choose a type?
Well, it's not.
It's not gonna be criminally inducing?
You know, it's a hard subject to talk about, and sometimes tempers can become invoked. It's a touchy subject. But the fact of the matter and the reality, at least in my view, with some street smarts behind this, is there's some, there's some music in the entertainment industry that caters to what I call prison culture and gangster culture. Any special agent, any detective, any criminologist would tell you the same thing, and as would any school teacher, okay? And there's a little too much of that been going on at Spoon Tonic. It got out of hand. I don't think the owners could see that happening, all right? I think that's a big thing to do, is to change the venue. Get a different crowd in there in the evening, different group of young people. There's a lot of good young people out there that aren't misbehaving and doing criminal stuff like what you folks are reading about here. But it isn't Spoon Tonic's fault this is happening. They're not the moving force. It's happening anyway, but what they can control is they can control their property that they control.
So who chose the music that they've been playing for the last three years?
They did, but they weren't, they weren't aware of it. They didn't think of that.
And so what type of music are you proposing?
Well, you'd have to bring, can I bring Jazz back up? He could elaborate a lot better than I could.
Sure.
Okay. Is that okay, Madam Chairperson? Here's Jazz. Answer his questions, please.
I was actually planning on taking the DJ permanently and putting in a jukebox, or maybe actually making Spoon Tonic like a little karaoke bar because I don't think there is a karaoke bar in Walnut Creek. I think that would be kind of fun for everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, I have Jazz there. You and your security fellow there indicated that, you know, you seriously upgraded the security. You know, you've gone to five people there. And when did that change occur?
That happened after I talked to Lieutenant Jauer.
Yesterday, six months ago?
It was months ago.
Okay, you don't know exactly when?
No. The last time he called me, actually.
Okay.
Yeah. But I did hire new staff, new everything. I started, whatever he had suggested I should do, I did. He even told me make the Hennessy price higher, or stop selling Hennessy. I like cognac, but what I did was I made the Hennessy price fifteen bucks. And lately, not many people are drinking Hennessy.
Thank you.
They're actually drinking a lot of tequila.
Okay, I have a question. With regard to, you said seventy percent of the revenue is generated after eleven PM, and I'm wondering if you have statistics for what percentage of revenue is generated after midnight?
Yes, Madam Chairperson. If I may approach, my client prepared some graphs. I don't, I. Will you come and explain that?
On top of the paper, it shows the date and the, from August eighteenth or nineteenth, I printed out last weekend. And it says five PM to eleven PM. And that's how much we did from that time. But on the other sheet, from eleven PM to two AM, you could see how much we made.
So these aren't all the same?
No.
Okay, so bring them all back. Sorry.
I had five do eleven.
They're not, they're different.
I didn't realize how many people there were.
I'm just trying to figure out because what you were saying isn't what I have here. All right, so I'm not, I'm not the math person on this commission, so if you could, do you have any just estimate? You're saying seventy percent after eleven PM, but is there some rough estimate that you have as far as how much is made after midnight?
She did the math.
Oh, good, a math person. No, that's fine. You would know.
I estimated I had, we were going over the numbers. It was around sixty-five percent of our revenue comes in between the hours of eleven PM and one thirty AM.
The seventy percent, like, the one thirty to two is not a big category, and.
Well, we do last call at one thirty, and then we get everybody out by one forty.
Got it.
Yep, so we don't, nobody is in there by the time it's two o'clock.
Okay, but you don't really have any good estimate of the difference between eleven and, it's that, if we suggested you close at midnight, like, how much revenue would be lost is my question.
We could probably pull it up in our system, but I wouldn't have that information at hand right this moment. But it's usually, we start carving, or we start charging a cover charge at eleven PM. The DJ was going on at ten PM. Cover would be at eleven, and that's when people started to come in.
Okay, all right, thank you. Appreciate that.
While we have you up there, sorry, I just had a quick question.
Commissioner Reiser.
As long as we're talking about trends, what are the, in terms of days a week, obviously it's Fridays, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, are they busy days or?
So Thursday night is karaoke, and it's pretty, it's mostly regulars and industry people that come in. It's, I work Thursday nights. It's pretty mellow for the most part. It does get busy, but it's fun. It's not, we don't have people in there that are causing problems. I'd say Friday and Saturday nights are the main days where it, we've really started to see the shift of behavior in people and the clientele.
And staying to the maximum hour as well. How about Thursday night? How about, is it open seven days a week?
Yes, we are.
How about Sunday through Wednesday nights?
It's seven days a week we're open until, we do last call at one thirty every night.
But in terms of just business in general, what percentage would you say is?
The bulk of our income is Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Right, okay.
A quick question.
A quick question. You talk about industry people. Who are we talking? Please explain.
Bartenders from the other, the surrounding bars like Masse's, Retro Junkie, which is another bar that's down the street, Yard House, True Food Kitchen, a lot of those people who Sunday night would, would normally be their day off. They come in and hang out. Obviously, it varies between whatever shift they're working, but that's what I mean by industry people.
Thank you.
Other commissioner needing?
Do you ever not serve alcohol to someone who seems like they're not going to be able to control themselves? Because I'm reading in here, there's a lot of intoxication and obviously it's a bar, so I get it.
Right. All the time. We cut people off all the time. Even if they're starting to act, I don't know, being loud or jumping around as an example, we'll let the security guards know, hey, please keep an eye on them and we won't serve them anymore.
Are they removed from the premises?
Sometimes they are if they're acting like they might be violent or might be a problem.
So even, even if they're, because I'm reading in here cocaine, the, the, the part that is interesting to me is the, the violence towards females that I'm reading in here. So even if someone doesn't have, is not intoxicated, but they're using another substance, should there be, look like they're acting inappropriately?
Yeah.
Would be immediately removed?
If they look like they're causing problems, we've, we've had instances before where a woman will report, hey, you just grabbed my butt, and we'll remove them over that.
And do you work Saturdays and Sundays?
I work Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I've, I just had a question for the security folks. I know you've said that, any of you, that now you're, you've implemented more parking lot sweeps or parking lot presence. And I'm wondering when that started because the reports we're getting are, and some of the, the resident neighbor reports that we received didn't seem to have any security presence at all during these incidents in the parking lots. And I'm wondering if that's still occurring or if you've changed your protocols with regard to that.
We're still doing our security sweeps. Now, as far as these things going down or happening, you know, for the most part, they're going to happen like without us being there. Like, as you said, like the blind spots, you know?
So there's no one, there's no one that just is stationed outside in the parking lot just to stand there and be there as a deterrent presence and make sure that nothing happens?
Well, in our personal parking lot, we do keep an eye on that. And as far as like the neighboring parking lots, like the big blind spots, no. We don't have anybody stationed up there watching. But when we are aware of something going down or happening, we do respond real quick. It's all eyes, all hands on deck at that point when something does happen and the neighbors like-
You're relying on neighbors or patrons in the parking lot to come back in and report to you? Or do you have surveillance cameras or other means of keeping, how are you keeping an eye? Is my question personally or through camera or just by reports?
Like as far as the neighboring parking lots?
Your parking lot.
Well, our parking lot, it's us, you know? Like as far as what's going on after or in the parking lot, that's usually after hours. But we still keep an eye on that at the same time.
So my question is, how are, how are you implementing keeping an eye out? Is it by somebody standing there and watching during the whole time? Or are you just coming out when it's reported? Or do you have a surveillance camera?
It's both or all three, actually. We got surveillance camera out there on our parking lot. We got eyes out there. And, you know, whoever's not out there, they'll be aware, come right out, you know?
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Are there any other commissioner questions this time? Okay, great. Thank you very much for all that information. We appreciate it.
Thank you, madam chairperson.
Now is the time when members of the public can provide public comment. So we have, I see there's somebody who's had their hand up for quite a while here on Zoom. But let's give anybody in the audience a shot too. If you'd like to speak, please come up and I guess we have one card?
Yes, madam chair, we have Paul Soria submitted a speaker's card. And also I would just note for those who are attending via Zoom, if you do wish to speak, go ahead and hit that raise hand button now and so that it'll be raised when we're ready to call on you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Paul. The whole, the whole idea, I, I have something written down, but I'm, I'm going to kind of wing it here because there, there's more to this, to what has been said. I mean, the, the window from 2021 on is the window that was opened by the shooting and the killing. That's, that's why they're on the radar. But this has been going on much longer with the garbage, with this, with that, vomit, urination, I've even found defecation, you know, and it's, it's not fun to pick that up. I mean, I'll pick up my dog's poop any day over this. It's awful. Vomit at, at the doorsteps, at, at your place of, of business. You have to wash it down before your customers get in or whatever. Illegal parking, loitering, it's just, the list goes on and on. And I hate to, to waste your time with all this because Officer or Lieutenant Jower has, has made a great report. But all the conditions on the CUP report or permit have been violated. Commissioner Pickett asked the perfect question, you know, as a fellow business owner, I don't want to see a business owner fail, you know? But I'm a firm believer in, in live and let live until it starts affecting, you know, the person or the other people. But surrounding parking lots, they're not parking lots. They're private property and, and cars park there. Things go on, you know, drug use, drinking, everything. You know, I've even had a truck hit a building, you know? As a matter of fact, the district attorney is pressing charges or attempting to anyway, you know, because of this. So, so they, there, there are things that have been going on for a long time. But the, the thing that put the, the whole, the whole thing on the, on the map is that, that shooting, you know?
So not to, but just to clarify, you're an adjoining business owner?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I had to put up a camera in, in the likelihood that I may be able to see who hit, who hit the building. You know, because they broke the window, damaged the framing, moved the whole windowsill in and, and, you know, it's, it's every weekend. This goes on every weekend. Friday, Saturday, Thursday is, is pretty mellow. Every other day it's, it's mellow. Before this, it was like a rockabilly bar or something and it was, it was calm. You've never, you'd never see this. So I don't know how far back that was exactly because it's all a big blur, but I mean, it's, it's a long time. So the, the, the three-year window is, is a very small window, but this has been going on longer. You know, I'm, I'm all for chances, but even three years is a long time, you know? And, and like I said, live and let live until it starts affecting you. If this was happening here, people were vomiting or causing issues here, I guarantee this would, this wouldn't be allowed. You know, and this is hidden away. So nobody really sees it except the officers. One, one of the, 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 the security guards came out and was walking by the police officers that came a couple of weekends ago and, one sec, and said, you guys, jokingly, he says, you guys get called every weekend, huh? And the officer's response was pretty much.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have anybody else in the chambers? Question for our commenter? No, okay. All right, is there anybody else in the chambers who'd like to make a public comment at this time? All right, it looks like we may have people on Zoom. If our secretary could try and sort that out, that would be great.
Yes, I'm going to be bringing in Justin McCullich. Okay, if, if Justin McCullich, I hope, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing. Oh, there we go, the microphone's on. Go ahead. Mr. McCullich, I see your microphone is on. Go ahead. Madam Chair, maybe I'll-
Yeah, why don't we see, we have a couple of other people with their hands raised. Maybe we can go back and see if we can get that working later.
Yes. Okay, I'm going to let in Willie Johnson.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Willie Johnson. I have been going to Spoons for the past two years and I now work there currently. I've been working there for the past few months. I got to Spoon Tonic Lounge when the crowd started to shift. And I can say that the crowd has definitely shifted. None of us like it. It annoys everyone that works there because they cause problems. They don't listen to younger crowd, like Jazz said. If we close at 11:00, it doesn't help us. And for everybody that works at the bar, bartenders, bouncers, whatever, you know, we won't have any place to work. Also, if we change the music, this should change the crap. Now, the other day we played country music. And as you can imagine, when everybody heard country music, a lot of them left. But a lot of them stayed because, you know, that's a different type of music. We did, yesterday we did punk rock, whole bunch of people, almost the same amount of crowd, almost the same amount of people on Friday and Saturday yesterday, and there was no incidents. And everybody was just having a good time. And that's just from a music change. So I, I understand that Walnut Creek is fed up and I understand that. And, but this is, I love this bar. I love Jazz. I love everybody that goes there. I love just everything and I don't want, you know, to see the bar go down. And I definitely don't want to see it not succeed because it's shut down at 11:00 PM. But I understand everybody's got to do what they got to do. It is what it is. But that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment. Okay, Andy, do we have, we have somebody else? Okay.
And next I'll be bringing in Liz P. Liz P, if you want to go ahead and turn on your microphone, please. Looks like they're not responding. I'll go and-
Okay, sorry. I'm just learning Zoom. This is not Liz P. I'm just using my wife's phone at the moment. My name's Brandon Bear. I own Black Sea Tattoos across the street and my wife as well is a business owner in the same parking lot as I am. Her business is Timeless Beauty Bar. We are patrons, friends, and at this point I've considered some of the employees, family members at this point. It's really hard to see any sort of, I don't know, time restraint on them being open because for me being a customer at this bar, even before Jazz and his family took it over, it, it's always been really, really chill. There haven't, there haven't been a lot of problems. I agree, I agree with William who was up speaking earlier for the bar that, including the new patrons that come along with COVID. I agree that it also came from the closing of bars like Brogan's. These crowds disperse and they go wherever they want. And these problems are still going to happen. I think it's a great idea to change the music. I think whatever they are already doing and are currently doing is a great move. The bar looks better. I've personally seen less problems. We see less problems in our parking lot in the past few years since things really hit. We're close proximity just across the street from North Main. And I think that's one of my main things that I find a little one-sided is to see Walnut Creek Police Department's Instagram stating that they have multiple officers patrolling downtown to help these bars. I've been a patron of Retro Junkie as well, where they have police stationed at their bar from what I've seen most of the time. I think some sort of help like that in between Masse's and Spoon Tonic Lounge would be a great help to security problems. Other than that, just as another business owner, I think they have been moving in great waves to improve their business and everything involved. I also think it's way more fair, like their attorney brought up, maybe a 90-day probationary period. This seems all very quick and it seems like a lot of information came late. Everybody that works there is, is always taking care of their own, you know? They're taking care of their problems and they're busy working. And that's why, you know, there's not a lot of police response because they're able to take care of it themselves. That's basically all I have to say. I just think it would be a little more fair to see more police presence in that area just because it does seem pretty barren to be in between downtown and Pleasant Hill. And that's all I got.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you.
All right, Andy, it seems like we still have, we have more.
Yes.
Excellent.
Let in Johnny.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi, so my name is Johnny Herrera. I've been a, I've been a worker at, an employee at Spoon Tonic Lounge for the past six years. I first started off as a DJ, just mostly all vinyl. Then I really, you know, I, I had met with Jazz more closely and, you know, it kind of became a, a, you know, we got really close. I started doing security. I did security there for about three years. And then I have been bartending there for three years now. I agree 100% with what everybody said with the, with the music change. It's been a, it's been, it's been night and day since, you know, pre-pandemic as to post-pandemic as the crowds just changed. A lot of people coming from different towns. And it's just, it's completely different now. You know, none of us that, none of us that currently work there, we don't, we don't like it at all. It's, it's just been a tonal shift and I, I believe that, I mean, yesterday I was the host of the, we had emo punk rock last night and, you know, a lot of people that used to go to Spoons that no longer do go there anymore because of how the crowd has changed and everything like that. A lot of people came yesterday. It was, it was fun. Everybody was having a great time. I hosted the entire thing and I, I believe that if we just, if we change the music, it's, it'll, it'll completely change the demographic now. I mean, I, I fell in love with the place when I first started going there, you know? Everybody has been a family to me. Jazz, Danny, everybody that's worked there, past and present. We're all really close. I am actually a new business owner as well. So I understand, you know, that aspect of everything. And, you know, I, I believe that with changing the music will change the demographic. And, you know, I, I think I agreed with the 90-day probation period. We've been doing all that we can to try to nick this in the butt. And, you know, and we, I'm a new business owner and, you know, it's, it's, taking away those hours are, would really, you know, affect everybody that works there. You know, it's, we, we don't start getting busy until, you know, 10 or 11 o'clock. So I believe that the 90-day probation period would be, would be great to show us how, how much we really care about this place and how we want to do all that we can to, to make it like old Spoons used to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Andy, we still have a couple more, right?
Yes. So I'll bring in Ethan.
Hello, can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, please.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Hi, my name is Ethan. I am a former employee of Spoon Tonic Lounge and a longtime patron. I stopped working there shortly, just around the time of the pandemic. And as a third-party observer, I could tell you that very much the, the shutdown did have a drastic sea change And as a third-party observer, I could tell you that very much the shutdown did have a drastic sea change in terms of clientele at Spoon Tonic Lounge. And I think that's kind of evidenced in the police report, too, if you look at the, the number of incidences that happened in 2021. And I think anybody who's been out in public or on a plane or at a concert will attest that it seems like people have kind of forgotten how to act since then. That said, I think, it may sound silly to some of you, but the, the effect that music has on a clientele, I do not think can be overstated. And I think changing the music can do a lot in regards of changing the, the culture of the Friday and Saturday night at Spoon Tonic Lounge. That said, I've also believed that there has always been a kind of an undesirable element to the nightlife at Walnut Creek. And, and I've seen the effects of shutting down bars like Krogan's and Redux and Farrington's. And it never really solves the problem. It just kicks the can down the road to another establishment. So I, I think that maybe the 90-day grace period to see the effects of the changes that Spoon Tonic Lounge is making is, is a great suggestion. And I'm worried that if you do something more drastic, like close them down at 11:00 or shut them down entirely, you will find that it's just a new bar that has this, this problem. Whereas by keeping them open and letting them make adjustments, you could still kind of spread out that element that may not go away, but at least they won't congregate all in one spot anymore. And I think that it could be a drastic improvement to the benefit of, of everyone involved. And thank you.
Oops, I don't have my mic on, sorry. Andy, who's next?
Fortunately, you're sitting close to me. I can hear you there. Let's see, next up is, just have a single letter, B. So I will bring them in.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
My name's Brittany. I just wanted to speak on behalf of Spoons as well. I've frequented the bar for probably about the past four to five years, so pre-pandemic and now. And I just wanted to echo what everybody is saying. There was a shift just with the demographic that was in the area. The workers at Spoon Tonics have done everything that they can, and just in regards to the parking lots and things like that. There are two parking lots. They can't see everything that's going on upstairs. If they were to have somebody up there, that's going to take away security being downstairs with the actual customers that are in the bar. And also what somebody brought up, the police presence at Retro Junkie. I frequented there as well, and they have a car parked outside, so that's going to be their deterrent. So they're able to have more of their staff and more of their security focusing on what's going on inside, instead of having somebody outside or roaming in the parking lot. When there is an issue, the security at Spoons, they get the issue outside, and the people are out on the street. They can't control what's going on up there. When they call the cops, it seems like they're being penalized in this report, that they're calling them for assistance. But would they, would they rather not have them call? It just kind of isn't making a lot of sense to me that it's going in the report that they're being penalized, that the police are responding. But they need the assistance. If something's happening outside, they're going to call. So it's kind of a catch 22. If they keep them in the bar and something happens, they're going to be penalized. They're calling, they're being penalized. And with the changes that they're making, if you close the bar down at 11:00, the numbers on the report show that the incidents are happening after 11:00. So they can't effectively change the issue, and you can't see their progress if you're shutting them down before that. You can't see the changes that they're trying to make. And how other people have said, it's just going to go somewhere else. The issue is going to be somewhere else. It's just unfortunate that Spoon Tonics is away from downtown, so the cops can't watch more than one bar at a time. When they're downtown, they can stand on the corner. They're looking at Dan's. They're looking at Modern China. It's a very close proximity to each other, and I think the police don't like going over to Spoons because they're pulled away from that. Again, it's, that is what it is. It's not anybody's fault. But if the issue, as the city is saying, that is at Spoon Tonics right now, then there needs to be more effort with the business owner and with them calling. The response needs to be that they're working together and they're a team, not that they're being penalized for calling them when that's what they've been asked to do. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Andy, who's next?
Going to give another try now back to Justin McCullich. Bring him in. And Mr. McCullich, if you would, there we go. Turn on your microphone. I'm guessing they're having some AV problems on their end.
I am enjoying the variety in the closed captioning of the ways to spell Mr. McCullich's name. That's been, it's been quite spectacular. All right, hopefully, we can get a, a mic on here.
Looks like the mic's turned on, but we're not hearing anything. So I think it's, and now it's off and on. I suspect there's a technical issue on their end. Looks like there's another person who's raised their hand. I can give them a try, give Mr. McCullich a chance to hopefully get their microphone to work.
Okay, that sounds like a good plan.
Somebody be bringing in Katerina Honcharak. Go ahead and turn on your microphone. Oh, here we are.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, please.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Katerina, and Spoon Tonic has been the first bar since I ever moved to Walnut Creek. That was in summer 2021. And since then, I fell in love with this place. I felt welcome, and I felt safe. Even if there's some weird situation going on, the staff made sure that the patrons are safe and okay. Considering that, I would say that I would sincerely ask you to seriously consider the 90-day probation for the Spoon Tonic Lounge because the changes are happening, but they need time. The staff needs time to implement them. Thank you. This is all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much for your comment. Who's next, Andy?
Let's see here, we've got Frank. I'll go ahead and bring him in.
Hello, members. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, please.
Oh, thank you for the time. My name is Frank. I've stated on, I've been a, I've been a patron of many of the bars such as Farrington's, Retro, Mr. Lucky's Dan's, since I, since I got out of the military, and I've met a lot of friends in those areas. And I've observed a lot of things as being older. I can't get out as much as I used to. But I have noticed, for example, I wanted to point out an example as I've been listening to this meeting the last hour and a half. I remember when Farrington's was stated or issued with a closing at midnight, I believe, or so, along the same lines. And it was a, it was, there was, it was a distinct, a distinct point I want to make is, you could see the Farrington's people come after Farrington's closed down to Spoons. So to, like, like many people said, it's just going to move down the road. When I would be at Spoons, it'd be chill. Midnight happens, you could even, you could notice. I would say to myself, oh, here comes the Farrington's crowd because they got hit with the same sanction to close early. So it's, to echo the point, as many people have used that term already. It's really not going to fix the problem, but I don't feel like a place such as Spoons that has regulars from before I was even around, that, that love to go there. It's, that won't be the main thing that fixes it. The music, yes. I, I hate, I don't like the kids, too. I, I leave, I leave early to avoid those kids. But being that Spoons has been so good to me over the years, it would be a shame to penalize the hard work that Jazz, folks like Danny and other employees that have worked there, that I've got to become good friends with, be penalized because you can't handle the knuckleheads. They're overpowering. There's too many of them. I would say that I, I feel like noticing at Farrington's recently, the ID card reader at the door deters a lot of those folks that either have something that they don't want the ID card reader to see. I've seen people turn around nuts a month ago, and that's kind of, I feel like, what is needed, a deterrent on the folks that know that they're up to no good and have no value to offer besides a good time, but instead just juvenile acts of ignorance. So that being said, 11 o'clock, that, that really is, that's harsh. I understand. I would say, I would say like a 12 o'clock on the weekends possibly. But I've seen other bars just congregate down to this up.
Your time is up now, so thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Andy, do we have anybody else?
I would just ask if there's anybody else attending via Zoom who wishes to speak on this item, who has not yet spoken. If you'd like to raise, please press the raise hand button to let us know. And it looks like not anybody, and the, Justin McCullich is, does not appear to be in attendance anymore either.
Well, he gave it a good try, I have to say. Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to make a comment at this time? Okay, so let's close public comment on this matter. And so now is the time when Spoon Tonic folks can have the opportunity to respond to the public comments or provide any additional information you would like at this moment. If you like, you don't have to, but if there's anything particular you'd like to respond to, now would be the time.
I think the ID reader is a really, really good idea, and I hadn't thought of that, but that is, I feel like that would be a good deterrent to people who have things that they want to hide and being up to no good.
I do like that idea. That's why I actually started looking at it on Amazon.
Okay.
I'm willing to do whatever I can to keep this business going. I invested too much money, too much time, too much blood, sweat, and tears. Danny and I, when I hired her, she stuck around with me for like nine years, and I just want to have it succeed. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate that very much. All right, so at this time, I'd like to close the public hearing.
I have a question of the applicant.
Oh, you do? Okay, yes, go ahead.
There seems to be a, a strong support for the notion that the problem is the music.
It is the music.
So why didn't you do something a year ago or two years ago with the music?
I did tell the DJs, stop playing that kind of music, and he did kind of implemented it, but he did want the crowd to start dancing, that kind of stuff. But it's, now it's been totally, I'm done with the DJ, not having him. I'm going to get a, I'll get a jukebox. They could play their own thing.
How, how long have you not had a DJ?
I'm going to actually implement it this weekend.
Okay, so you still, up until right now, you have a DJ?
From, from now on, no DJ.
Thank you.
Um, well, I guess we're, it's, it's a little bit chaotic, so why don't you come up if you have another comment you would like to make in response to the public comments?
You know, this is just subjective, my opinion, okay, but based on a lot of experience. In terms of criminology and criminal behavior, Jazz is a layperson. All the time, I, I've seen a lot, okay, in my 20 years as an attorney and other things that I've done, been involved with, involving criminal elements. Many times, I've spoken to city councils, politicians, and they don't understand the gangster lifestyle. And a lot of people don't understand the allure of the music, what to look at. A lot of people don't even know what gang tags look like when your town is cut up into sections. The tenant knows about that, but when I asked him about, well, what kind of variance do you see in here of criminal elements? Serenyo variance, Norteño elements? He couldn't even answer that. But the fact of the matter is, is there's such a thing, it's referred to in popular culture as gangster music, and if you just turn the dial around on the FM, you'll find it. You'll be appalled. A lot of parents don't know about it. Jazz didn't know about it. I told him about it. He hired me, and I came in and gave him straight talk about that, met with the police, had straight talk with them. Jazz knows about this element of criminology now. He can act on it. I told him about it. That's why he didn't act on it before in the way that you were asking, you were inquiring with him. He knows about it now. A lot of people don't know about it, and they should. It's a matter of public concern all around.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Not the applicant, the Spoon Tonic representatives. All right, now I'm really going to close the public hearing. It's closed. And I'd like to bring it back to the commission for any comments, questions, or deliberation. Who'd like to start?
I'll start.
Vice Chair Strongman, you're up.
Probably a question for our attorney. That if we did a, some sort of a probation period, how would we word that and how would we structure it? So that less work for the police, less work for staff?
I think you meant our attorney, not the, not Spoons attorney. Sorry, you can sit down. It's okay. So many attorneys. It's okay. Thank you.
So, yeah, the, the commission does have some discretion, and I guess I'll, I'll kind of summarize a couple of options. One is, and, you know, I heard 90 days thrown out. There's no specific timeline, but one, the commission could defer its decision, meaning you've heard evidence, you, if the commission so desires to hear more evidence at a later date, and some of that evidence being that, you know, what's happened between tonight and a future date. The commission could choose to continue this hearing to a future date and then take up the consideration at that time with the benefit of any additional evidence that it might want to hear. And I raised that, I raised it in that format because, you know, this item's here due to a fact that there's been a notice of violation, you've got evidence in front of you, and so arguably, if you said, hey, we're just going to create a probationary period, I wouldn't characterize it like that because there's an argument down the road that when you go to take a final action, there's a due process argument that says, you didn't take action before. How can you take action now X days later? And so if, if the commission chose to do that, I would characterize it as you're deferring action, you're deferring a decision to a later date because you want to hear more evidence, but it's the same public hearing. The another option, and again, I wouldn't characterize it as a probationary period, but another option that the commission could undertake is you, you could, you could delay, again, I'm not going to throw out a specific time, the staff proposal's 11 o'clock. You could change the hours, and you could You could change the hours, and you could delay that for a period of time, and, but it would be automatic, meaning those hours will change in X days. And you could invite the business to come back and effectively apply for longer hours based on what's happened between today and that future date. So again, that would be taking a final action tonight to say, the hours will change, but we're staying that, and they don't go into effect until a date in the future. And then it would be, the onus would be on the business to come back and basically apply to have the hours, you know, have that overwritten with a new, with a new CUP provision that says, okay, because you've made these changes, we now have effectively changed our mind, and we're gonna not, you know, that final action can be overwritten, so I, I guess what I'm, it's a little long-winded, but I guess what I'm saying is, i- i- if you're gonna take final action, that final action should be clear as to what the hours are now, or you should defer your final action.
Would we be able, if we did some sort of a continuous hearing to X date, could there be a rubric to, between the police department and the business to come up with how we're going to measure progress?
Uh, yeah, you, I mean, you could provide direction, y- you could provide direction to staff to, uh, work with the business, and, you know, it would be the business's obligation to come back with that plan, but, you know, you could provide direction that says, hey, you need to work with the police department and come up with a plan.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Commissioner Lezak?
So, a few years ago, we as a group, um, heard a similar discussion about Krogan's. And in the Krogan situation, similar to this one, it was a restaurant, which is what I understood this originally to be, that then got a use permit in two thousand and one to expand their wine and beer sales to, to full bar, to, you know, full alcohol. I mean, I don't know that this is a, a, a full bar in and of itself, right? I mean, it, this is a, a business that has a series of use permits, uh, you know, that as they went, uh, established additional timeframes and additional rights, and that as part of that, for a variety of reasons, now is not managing their business in accordance with, the responsibilities that go with those rights. And so, my perspective is that there are consequences for that, and changing their hours, uh, to me is a reasonable consequence. Uh, in the case of Krogan's, we didn't shut them down. We reduced their hours and suggested that there be other requirements, I believe a security plan and a number of other things. And they said how great that was and how much they appreciated that, and then they were gonna go back and implement those things. And after further looking at them, they realized that they couldn't survive economically, and they closed. But I, you know, my perspective was, we didn't close them. We set a s- set of conditions based on the consequences of their actions, and that that was financially infeasible for them. So based on that experience, my concern here, based on some of the, the testimony that was provided, is that if we do a similarly, make eleven o'clock the, the timeframe, which is recommended by staff, that we would essentially be establishing the same situation, that they would have to go back and, and likely, uh, not survive. So the, the question is, what really is the intent of the staff recommendation? What really is the recommendations that we might have for a process? Um, and I'll throw this out there just for conversation and let you, you, you respond, but, you know, if, if the idea would be eleven o'clock is so punitive that they would close, if we would consider twelve o'clock as a timeframe with the idea that there really is, uh, you know, consequences of your actions, and that there then be a process that they could come back and apply for an extension to later hours based on providing a plan. You know, I heard discussion of ideas, but there is no real plan. This is like an incredibly unprofessionally run, uh, facility that has no plan, uh, is, is making it up kind of as they go, and, and I'm not suggesting that that doesn't, this doesn't give them an opportunity to, to get some of the right help on board to help them fix that. Um, but I'm putting it out there that, you know, that I would think that if we punish them by changing the hours till midnight, that creates the opportunity for them to still have some hours of operation, and yet will create a timeframe in which some of the element probably don't, won't want to be there. And I recognize that those people will leave and go elsewhere, that's the nature of this. Um, and maybe then the business can come back to the group, you know, in six months or a year, whatever seems the appropriate amount of time, with an appropriate plan, and ask to then be, have their hours extended till one o'clock. And then, you know, with good behavior, come back again six months or a year later and ask to get back to two o'clock. So that, that's sort of a process and idea that I'm gonna put out there, and I'll, uh, ask you all to respond in how you, you know, what you think about that proposal.
Commissioner Pickett?
Sorry. Uh, it was, it was suggested by Spoon Tonics that we consider a grace period, letting them continue to operate for ninety days and review it. The city attorney addressed that, but I don't, I don't think that's an appropriate action. Um, one act, one option I, we have is just to close them down. And that's certainly worthy of considering by this commission. We've closed other, other establishments, or by enforcement of very strict conditions, other establishments have been closed by this commission. You know, I think our, uh, society is becoming too tolerant of bad behavior. And, you know, to put it in a two-year-old's terms, Spoon Tonics needs a timeout. I can't see any reason to allow anything other than an eleven o'clock, uh, closing time. We can consider, like we've done with other establishments, establish something like that that is very, punitive for the actions that have occurred, um, but allows them an opportunity to recover from that in the future. If they can really pull it off and prove it to us, they can pull it off. And as Commissioner Lezak mentioned, we do not have a plan from Spoon Tonics. That would have been very helpful to have, was some, something submitted to us and saying, this is what we are going to do. And we don't have that, which gives me, uh, a lack of confidence that, that we're gonna see any progress, so. I guess my support, and I, and I'm really, you know, not even comfortable with eleven o'clock. I know ten o'clock would be fatal. I think businesses can survive with an eleven o'clock limit. It reduces their revenue substantially for maybe two nights a week. Didn't say it does it every night, um, but since most of their revenue comes in in two nights, I think it is survivable, and I would be most comfortable supporting the staff's recommendation, and nothing, nothing more lenient than that.
Commissioner Anderson?
I'm looking at the, the list of, of events here, and, uh, I'm listening to the testimony here. Uh, I, sort of two ways I can look at this. One is, uh, that, you know, the owners have, have talked to the police, but that was yesterday. They want to do away with the DJ and change the music, but maybe next weekend. So it seems it's very, very late in the game to be addressing issues that have been here for quite a while, as we've heard. On the other hand, I look at the events more recently, and there's been only seven so far this year. There's actually only been three in the last six months, one of which took place before eleven o'clock. And the last three months, been zero. Maybe it's just coincidence, um, maybe it's a trend, I'm not sure. I also look through, through these, and there are, you know, most of the events take place after eleven, but the vast majority of those take place after twelve. So I would not be averse, I think, to, um, you know, give Spoon Tonics a better chance of surviving economically, um, with a twelve o'clock, um, curfew, um, or closing time. And, and set, you know, a time, they can come back, show that, that the changes they've made have actually made a difference, and, uh, you know, request extension later date, later time to close.
I tend, I tend to agree with that as a reasonable approach with a, a twelve o'clock, a twelve o'clock stop would be at eleven thirty last call. Gives them about ninety minutes into, when the restaurant upstairs shuts down at ten, that gives them ninety minutes into it. If they're open from six on or whenever they're on, open until then, it gives them plenty of opportunity to fill the bar. Up to two hours of music, ninety minutes of that, between the ten, the, uh, between the ten and the eleven thirty pour time, if you will, the, the prime time for pouring, seems to me to be a good approach in terms of, if we're gonna play with times and give them an opportunity to straighten it out. But I agree with you on the lack of specificity. I, I'm still concerned for the neighboring businesses that we haven't really discussed in terms of how it's affected their, their, the properties in the surrounding area there. And anything that we, that, anything that we do, um, decide on would come along with a specific plan with measurable objectives, including how they treat the neighbors' properties, so, it's my two cents.
Any else? Okay, I, um, I am very concerned about the complete lack of any written security plan that was presented to us. Um, in other situations of this type that I've experienced on this commission, uh, we have been given either, you know, a fairly simple plan, just outlining basic, um, additional security or, um, alcohol control or whatever the issue is, but some means of addressing the specific problems that have occurred. Um, in this case, we have quite a bit of conflicting evidence as to whether or not there are actually security people in the parking lots, um, at any given time, and, there's nothing in writing, and, um, apparently, nothing was done to, that we're aware of really to change specifically in response to some pretty serious incidents that occurred. So that's alarming to me. It shouldn't take us saying, you have to come to the commission and we're gonna take drastic action before um, an owner modifies their security protocols to address ongoing issues. But I do see some improvement in the statistics at the same time, um, but I don't think we can just rely on that, and I don't think we can put something in place that isn't specific, because we don't want to deter people from calling the police for assistance, but we need to have some plan in place to, uh, deal with the problems that have been documented. Uh, so that's my biggest concern with regard to this. Um, I would be open to, um, a later time than eleven, because that doesn't seem late enough, given the business model, but, um, I don't think we can be regulating the specific music that they're playing, um, so some other security plan has to be in place, um, as a condition, I think, of us considering anything other than what staff has recommended. Those are my thoughts. Anybody else have any comments? Questions? Would anybody like to make a motion of some sort? Commissioner Lezak? You, you move.
Alright, well, I, I, I started this, so, um, I will motion, um, that we, um, adopt the, um, the resolution for modification of the conditional use permit for the Spoon Tonic Lounge. And based on the conditions that are included in the staff report, with the modification to condition number one, to allow Spoon Tonic Lounge shall close at twelve PM seven nights a week. And that we would add an additional condition that, uh, would allow Spoon Tonic to come back before the commission, no sooner than twelve months from the, uh, uh, expiration of the appeal period of, of this, um, to request an extension of, of their hours or a change, modification to their permit. And a, a last condition that would be a, um, suggestion, uh, that's, that Spoon Tonic work with city staff, uh, and the police department to come up with a, a plan to present to the, the commission if they so choose to come back, of how they would address the, you know, A, their security issues, uh, B, their, uh, communication with, uh, the, the city police department. In particular, you know, a suggestion that they had started attending these, these meetings with, with the, the weekly meetings with the bar, uh, uh, group. And, uh, the last item would be that they include an item on how they will handle, um, security, uh, for the neighboring businesses and parking lots, so that we not only will see a reduction in the, the number of instances here, the, uh, the responses, but also a reduction in the impact on the neighbors. And all those things are, are really a, a, a direction to work with sta-, for them to work with staff, because if they would like to have any change to their mo-, or modification of those hours, I think those are all criteria that we would agree would need to be presented to us to, to even consider that.
Okay, is that, is that a modification you can understand here?
Yeah, I believe so, I just want to clarify it. So clearly, the, the first condition i- is very clear. With respect to the other things you mentioned, I, I want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly. That's direction to the business that if they come back, when they come back to reapply for an extension to their CUP hours, those are the expectations of, of what the commission would see i- i- in connection with that application.
That, that, that's right, it's a suggestion.
Okay.
So, they can, if they choose to come back at that time, they can present to us anything they want. But I want to make it clear, at least in writing from what our discussion is, what a minimum expectation is. I mean, to, to the chair's point, uh, we've seen a number of these before, and they've all been fairly thoughtful. We've had some, some folks who've had some problems and had their hours reduced and come back a year later, so this is not without precedent. And one of those people, when they came back, not only, you know, came back with, you know, the, the support of the city police department, which is a huge factor here, but they came back with some fairly detailed explanations of what they had changed and what they were gonna do going forward.
And, and is it also fair to characterize the one year as a suggestion from the standpoint that, you know, instead of having it as a specific condition of approval, that, you know, the commission's not inclined? You know, the commission wants to see a track record?
Explain to me what the standard use permit, there's, there was, we've had this before where that we've had conditions where the, they couldn't come back for a certain period of time. Is, is, is there a standard in the, in the, in the, in the ordinance that was created in two thousand and twelve?
Um, I, there are no, there, there are no time limit standards of that nature in the ordinance, in terms of just general practice. Typically, with the business wanting to, you know, introduce alcohol into it, um, usually they're encouraged by staff to first apply for an administrative use permit to allow service up till eleven o'clock, uh, bef-, and, and then to see how things go for about a year before applying for a conditional use permit for later hours. Uh, but there's no actual requirement in the code for that.
So it could be a condition that, that the commission puts on, which is an expectation of a cer- certain period of time or not. I mean, if, if we didn't specifically write that condition, they could, they could apply for an extension next week.
Right, and i- if they did so, and they were in front of the commission, the commission could say, we told you at the last public hearing that we weren't inclined to approve any additional hours for at least a year. So i- i- it can be a formal condition, or it can be kind of direction to the business that, look, you, you have the option to reapply in the future, but from the commission's perspective, we want to see a track record for a year.
Well, we, we can make the condition specific, correct? We can say you can't come back for a year.
Yeah, I think we just gen-, we generally don't tell an applicant they can't apply for something. We, we, we evaluate the application at the time it's made, so, I, I think that's where I- We, we evaluate the application at the time it's made, so I, I think that's where I, I guess I'm steering you a little bit away from making it a formal condition of approval, and instead just communicating expectations which get the, should get the same result, which is if somebody, i- if you, if you communicate that you expect, that you want to see a track record before they come back and reapply for hours, if they apply earlier in that, during that process, if they want to take that risk and go through that process, the commission has the discretion to say, look, I don't think, you know, we, we just changed your hours six months ago, and from our perspective, this isn't enough of a track record for us to increase your hours. So you, you can still make that decision, and it would be the applicant's risk if they applied before that time.
Yeah, I, my, my sense is that in other situations like this, that we have waited a period of time that was, I, I thought, a year before folks came back, and I couldn't remember whether that was an expectation or, or a condition. So at your advice, I'll go ahead and make it a suggestion that the applicant, when they, if they choose to come back, would provide a minimum amount of, of time for there to be sufficient data for us to be able to, to determine that it's not just a, you know, a, a short-term trend. And I'm going to suggest that that be a year.
I'd like a second, if I can get a clarification. When you said 12:00 PM, you meant 12:00 AM?
Midnight.
I guess, yes, I did mean that, yes.
Closing them at noon would be a little draconian.
Yeah. It depends on if they stayed up all night.
Twenty-four hours. Midnight, whatever that is.
12:00 AM. 12:00 AM.
Sorry, I was interpreting off of the conditions itself, and yes, that it was, that is correct. Thank you for the clarification.
I, I do want to clarify one, one additional aspect of that condition. I think Commissioner Reiser raised the issue of kind of last call versus closing, so the condition as it reads right now is just closing at midnight. And I don't know if the commission wants to be more specific about...
Well, this, this typically has more to do with their ABC license, does it not? That most establishments have to, you know, can't have alcohol out past a certain point. So are we, do we need more, be more specific that their last, that they can, the last serving hour is 11:30?
So, many of our CUPs have a specific provision that'll state, sales and service of alcohol will end at a certain time, and the business will close at a certain time, and, and it's essentially there to ensure that, you know, in this example, you don't have orders at 11:58.
And, and that's typically worded as sales, service, and consumption, with sales and service ending at whatever the last call time, consumption and business close being, ending at a certain time.
Okay, and I, and I understood from, from the testimony that was provided, that their sales and service ends at 1:30, and that their consumption and closing is at 2:00, and that their practices, that they have people out of there even before that to make sure that they don't exceed that. So I, I would agree that we should be that specific, make sales and service 11:30 PM and consumption and closing at 12:00 AM.
Okay. We have a motion?
Secondor agrees, yeah.
By Commissioner Anderson. So, Commission Secretary, can you please record?
Could you, could we have a repeat of what exactly we're voting on?
Sure, sure. And, and, and I can read, I can read that, I can read that provision as amended. So, section one would basically now read, Spoon Tonic Lounge shall cease sales and service of alcohol at 11:30 PM seven nights a week, and shall close at 12:00 AM seven nights a week.
But there's no, nothing in the thing, what we're voting on, saying that you can't come back for a year.
Right, as, as it sits now, it's, it's, it's basically advice and direction to the business that, I'm paraphrasing, so if, if I'm stating it in a way that the commission doesn't agree with...
That's correct. You talked me out of a formal condition into a more advisory and suggestive tone in terms of, we do want the business to succeed. I think that was the general consensus of the discussion, that we're trying to give them some advice, and without directing them to hire certain professionals or to behave in a particular way. But we'd certainly have an expectation as a group that, that we would see something of that nature before we would make changes to this. So thank you for the clarification.
And you'd see a track record of 12 months.
So if that, if that, sorry, if that comes back to us, if they choose to do something in six months, and we have some change of commissioners and stuff, how's that stuff regurgitated? Is the staff report going to tell us that we, we recommended that at the time, or how's that, historically, how's that brought forward?
Yes, absolutely, there would be an administrative record, of course, you know, from this meeting, and that information would be relayed in the staff report.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion and a second. So, Commission Secretary, can you please record the vote?
Yes, Commissioner Reiser.
Yes.
Commissioner Needing.
Yes.
Commissioner Lezak.
Yes.
Commissioner Pickett.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Strongman.
Yes.
And Chair Ward.
Yes.
And the motion carries.
And I will just mention, it was mentioned once earlier, that this matter is appealable within 10 days of this decision. To the city council.
Okay, so, thank you very much, everybody, for coming. At this time, I'd like to take maybe a five-minute break, just to let everybody clear out, and before we start our next...
Thank you.
Our next item.
Hi, Paul. Hi, now, nice to meet you.
Good to meet you finally. Fig says hi.
Yes, thanks. So...
Okay, so we're back from our break. Thank you, everyone. And now I'd like to move on to our second public hearing, which is the project, the project is SB 9 Ordinance, Zoning Ordinance Amendment. There's a lot of ordinances in there. And first, we'll start with a staff presentation by Andy Smith.
...computer. Good evening, Andrew Smith, Senior Planner, and actually, not providing the presentation, but merely an introduction. And we'll keep that short tonight, and given the, the lateness of the hour. You may recall about, oh, it was a month ago, geez, I'm sorry, was it two weeks ago? A month ago, it had to have been a month ago. We were in front of this commission, we had a study session to discuss possible provisions to be included in a local ordinance for Senate Bill 9, SB 9, and we took that input from this commission, as well as, there was a community survey, which will be spoken of later, and we have prepared a draft ordinance for this commission's consideration and recommendation to the city council. So with that said, I will go ahead and turn it over to our consultant, Heather Coleman, who will give you the presentation and go over the staff's recommend, recommendation. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. As Andy mentioned, we are bringing to you a draft zoning ordinance amendment that reflects the input that we received from you last time. For anybody who's new, just to, a quick SB 9 recap, it was a law passed in 2021 that went into effect January 1st, 2022. The intent is to help alleviate California's housing crisis and provide housing variety. It requires cities to allow duplexes and lot splits in single-family residential zones, and it allows, but not, does not require cities to adopt local ordinances, and by doing so, they can set standards over some aspects of SB 9 projects. Oh. Okay. There we go. Sorry. So, the city adopted an urgency ordinance in 2021 and extended that in 2022. It expires in December 2023 and cannot be extended any more times per state law. We held a study session with you on July 27th, and took the comments we received from that to draft the ordinance. There were, there was an online public survey posted on the city's website, open from July 23rd to August 3rd, I'm sorry, July 13th to August 3rd, and it's getting a little late. We got over 600 responses to that, and it's, that was included as an attachment to your staff report. The proposed ordinance, it would be, would revise the interim ordinance in certain respects, but keep, keep it largely intact. As Andy mentioned, the task tonight would be to review the draft ordinance and make recommendations to the city council, which is to be, yet to be scheduled. Just mentioning that adopting a, a local ordinance implementing SB 9 is consistent with many goals, policies, and programs in the 2023 to 2031 housing, housing element, particularly calling, you know, for new housing development, development of affordable housing, increasing housing opportunity outside of the core area, and codifying Senate Bill 9 locally is, is specifically one of the programs in the housing element, and therefore something that needs to be done. Thought it was worth bringing in also the 2025 General Plan, Chapter 4, Built Environment, talks about infill development being compatible with its surroundings, and so that is another important value to keep in mind. We heard the commission's input on overall approach, and while it was, you know, there were a variety of perspectives, some of the common threads we heard were providing some appropriately scaled infill housing, recognizing that it may not be a big, it may not be a large quantity of housing, but there at least is some opportunity, while maintaining the character and scale of existing single-family neighborhoods, neighborhoods, and minimizing potential impacts on adjacent, adjacent neighbors. Another thread we heard is increasing the flexibility of the SB 9 regulations in comparison to the interim ordinance, which was as, on the, on the very strict end, allowing only what is allowed under state law, and creating some greater parity between SB 9 and ADU regulations, so that property owners who may be interested would have... would have some incentive to use SB 9 regulations. There was a wide range of opinions expressed in the online survey and in public comments received. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's all over the place. Some people advocated for flexibility and other people wanted the regulations to be as strict as possible or even, they opposed SB 9, but, but that's not really something that we can handle at the city level. So I thought it was worth mentioning that we're, you know, we're trying to balance various objectives and values, providing some housing variety and opportunities for infill development. Some public, some people commented that it provides an opportunity to build small units for family members of older or younger generations. The SB 9 units can be affordable or moderate. They're not required to be, but they may be. And, but we also heard that it's important to respect the patterns of existing single-family neighborhoods and respect the privacy of adjacent neighbors. So floor area. This is going to be your most challenging topic tonight. The other ones are pretty straightforward. But, so state law says that you must allow at least two 800-square-foot SB 9 units. The comments that we heard last time ran, ran the gamut, but we thought there was some concurrence around allowing larger, around using zoning, the zoning regulations such as setback height and lot coverage to really establish the building envelope, establish what can be allowed. And we also heard some concurrence around allowing slightly larger units, somewhat larger units on larger lots. Wide range of opinions expressed in the public online survey. Our staff recommendation is to allow larger SB 9 units, if the project complies with standard setbacks and lot coverage, and use a sliding scale for larger lots. So we've said that, we've, we've provided some possible alternatives for you to consider on the floor area issue. The first one would be flexible size units, limits for both units. But those flexible size limits would depend on, on both units meeting standard setbacks. So, yeah, all, and we're, we're actually, we think we understood the intent of the commission to be that all buildings on the lot need to comply with standard setbacks and lot coverage requirements of the zoning district in order to qualify for this. And then if they don't comply with the standard setbacks, then they would be limited in size. And the degree to which they'd be limited in size, we will get, we will get to that in a moment. So then the other major alternative would be that your first unit would be unlimited in size in floor area as long as it meets the setbacks. But your second unit would be restricted whether or not it meets the setbacks. And then sort of our suboptions under each of these is how, you know, so your, the, your one that meets the setbacks can be unlimited, have unlimited floor area. How, how small can the second, how large can the second unit be? So suboption A is to just use the ADU floor area limits. They vary by lot size and they vary according to whether you have a studio or one-bedroom unit or a two- or more-bedroom unit. Suboption B would be to use a broader sliding scale. These, these net lot areas are based on your single-family residential zoning district lot area minimums. And we provided a larger range of floor area as well. Your suboption C is sort of a hybrid in which we are combining lot areas with sizes that, you know, maybe, that, that can be affordable to, to, I think Andy could explain this better, maybe. But you want to go ahead? You have the correct wording for this, I think.
So this, what we have here is kind of a combination of sliding scale that's just allowing larger units on larger properties, but still scaled back such that the resulting unit sizes are generally affordable to moderate-income households when taken into consideration rental rates and utility charges. These ones are not, shall I say scientifically connected to the actual, what is actually affordable, at least with regard to the three- and the four-bedroom units, because with the research that we've done that establishes what is generally an affordable, what size units are affordable to moderate-income households. We looked at studios, ones, and twos, not threes and fours. But I will tell you that the, what is considered in Warner Creek affordable to a moderate-income household for a two-bedroom unit, and that's assuming one person per bedroom is resident, is, it's, it's about 1,060 square feet, based on current, on recent rental information.
Okay, thanks. Sorry to put you on the spot like that. So then our next topic is building height. We heard majority commission support for allowing SB 9 units that meet standard setbacks. So the setbacks required by the zoning district to be the same site, same height as other buildings in the same district, other buildings, including single-family homes. And those that do not meet the standard setbacks, but, but meet the state's minimums of four feet from side and rear, those would be limited to one story. And that is consistent with the recommendation that we're making. Parking. State law says that the city cannot require more than one parking space per SB 9 unit. And no parking spaces can be required within a half-mile of a, of a major transit stop, which in this case is one of the Bart stations or within one block of a car share. There was a range of opinion in the public, in the, in the public comments. The planning commission also expressed a range of opinions, but the majority supported requiring one part, one parking space, but allowing it to be uncovered. And that is what we're recommending. Design standards. State law says that cities can adopt objective design standards as long as they don't physically preclude at least two 800-square-foot units. The planning commission comments we got were, majority said maintain the current design standards with an updated reference to the draft design review standards and guidelines. I would point out that it would only be the objective standards of that document that would apply, not the guidelines. It's clearly, and in the documents, clearly divided between guidelines and standards. So that shouldn't be a problem. And the public comments ranged. We did hear concerns about two-story projects in predominantly single-story neighborhoods. But we are recommending retaining the design standards of the interim ordinance and adding a reference to the new objective design standards that will, that will be effective when they, when, once they get adopted. We had a lively discussion about impact fees last time. There are, you know, a lot of different, you know, ins and outs of that. And we, we did hear majority support for keeping development impact fees for SB 9 units. Those consist of park fees and traffic fees, I believe. Yes. And, but waiving the inclusionary housing in lieu fee for smaller SB 9 units, which makes them more on par with ADUs. Smaller ADUs do not pay the inclusionary housing impact fee. Public comments. It wasn't one of the issues that we asked about in the survey, but people volunteered that both permit fees and impact fees were, could be obstacles. So we are recommending, or staff is recommending, continuing to charge development impact fees for SB 9 units, but exempting units that comply with the ADU floor area limits from the inclusionary housing requirement. Lot width and frontage. Cities can set standards for this as long as they still allow an urban lot split. Planning commission comments were pretty unanimous that instead of setting the 24-foot minimum flagpole width that we had in interim standards that we should just go ahead and refer to the requirements of the, of the fire, fire protection district and other safety and utility agencies. That's what we're recommending. With easements, we heard comments from the commission that easements are not an ideal or preferred solution, private access easements. But they should be allowed if it's the only way to create a lot split. So that's what we're recommending, that access to a rear lot could be via easement rather than direct frontage on a street, on a public street. However, you know, that, that, whatever type of accessway, private drive is used, it should meet the requirements of the fire protection district. A new topic that we didn't bring to you last time, but came to our attention, is that, you know, there are different ways that cities have responded to this, this, you know, the state law says you can't physically preclude the development of at least two 800-square-foot units on each lot. So in the interim regulations, we had a pretty generic statement that said, you know, "Standards shall be waived as needed to accommodate these two units." And the planning manager shall make that determination about how much they need to be waived. We noticed in another jurisdiction that we reviewed, they, they established a priority order for waiving these standards. And we thought that was an interesting approach to bring to you. So it would say, you know, which standard needs to be waived first and then waive that as much as needed. And then if that still doesn't accommodate the two 800-square-foot units, then go to the next one and see if that, how much that would need to be waived in order to accommodate an SB 9 project. So this is the order that we're proposing, and we'd like to have your feedback on it. So the way it works is you'd start with number one, waive that one, waive the next one, waive the next one. And I want to point out that lot coverage on here is, comes before setbacks. And we think that, you know, and, you know, I took a look at the, at the lot coverage and setback requirements of, of the different, the various single-family residential districts. Lot coverage is more constraining. And we also think that putting the setbacks and, and the height limits toward the latter part of the list will help address some of the concerns about development that's going to be really close to neighbors or that will, will, you know, that will have like higher units close to, you know, say, four feet from a neighbor's side property line. And, and front setback has to do, you know, it will really help maintain the character by not having these units be too close to the street or in front. Another item that we is, we didn't bring to you last time, but we noticed as a, it's a correction to be more consistent with the state law. This has to do with, with, once a property owner does a lot split, as allowed under SB 9, they can have up to, they can have two units on each resulting lot. And per state law, those can be any type of unit. So they can be a, an existing house. They can be a new SB 9 unit. Or they can be some combination of a primary and secondary unit, like an existing house plus an ADU or a new SB 9 unit plus a JADU. But they can be either accessory units or primary units. And we just wanted to correct that to make it more consistent with state law. So our recommendation is to choose a floor area option and suboption and adopt the resolution as amended, recommending that the city council adopt their proposed ordinance. So we are, oops. That one, ideally, it would say questions.
But now you've seen under the hood that we actually have additional slides on, yeah, backup slides.
Great, backup slides. I love it. All right. So, yeah, this is very confusing from a kind of procedural standpoint. Obviously, we don't have an applicant or questions with regard to that. So maybe I can propose that we do these decisions that we want to try and reach some consensus with regard to that and then open it up for public comment, questions, public comment. And then...
I would suggest if there's any questions for staff that you start with that before there's any deliberation or comment, and then take public input. I do know that there's a member of the public in attendance tonight who does want to speak. And then start deliberation and making decisions.
Okay. All right. I can see, I can see that. I can see it both ways. But let's, let's do that. So questions from the commission to start. Okay.
Just clarification that we only have, we have to choose the floor area options and suboptions. That's the only thing we really need to hash out.
We can object to the rest of the...
We could object to the rest of it, and we have other questions.
Let me actually clarify, try to explain that, because it is admittedly a little bit, it can be rather confusing. And as the chair did note, of course, you don't have to follow staff's recommendation at all. You can come up with something entirely of your own if you so choose as a commission. What, what our recommendation is with regard to floor area is there's first two choices, two primary options. One is to allow the potential for both units to be unlimited in size if everything on the property complies with setback and lot area. Second option is to only allow that for the first unit on a lot. And then the second one be subject to floor area limitations. And in either case, if everything on the property does not comply with setback and lot coverage, both units are going to be subject to the floor area limitations. So you pick one of those two. That's primary option one or primary option two. Once you've made that decision, then you go to the suboptions, A, B, and C, which is to decide how, for the SB 9 units that will be limited in floor area, how do you want to limit them? So pick one or two and then choose A, B, and C. Or A, B, or C. Or come up with something entirely of your own making.
Okay.
Should I flip back to the slides?
Well, first, we're going to see if there's any more questions from the commissioners based on what you presented. Seeing none. Oh, sorry. You didn't move fast enough here. Commissioner Pickett, please.
I'm moving slow tonight. The table you gave us on, it was page six of the staff report that has alternates 1A, 1B, 1C. And they're showing all sorts of, you know, studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom sizes, three-bedroom sizes, four or more. Can we limit the number of bedrooms? They say we don't want anything more than two bedrooms.
I have to think about that. I can't, I can't think of a reason that we can't. But I don't know if we, if we can. I haven't seen anything in SB 9 that says we can't.
That, ooh. And our assistant city attorney is, is looking at the...
Okay, while you're looking at that, I have one other, I have one other question.
I mean, I've looked through the actual SB 9 text many times.
You totally lost me on the waiver thing.
Oh, okay.
When is somebody permitted to ask for a waiver? I mean, I'm, I'm used to the multifamily stuff where you put in affordable housing and you get concessions and waivers. Is this related to that? Or how, what, when do you get to ask for waivers?
This is different. It doesn't require such a formal process. It's, it's, yeah. I'm not sure exactly what process it would be, but it would have to be, you know, just part of the application, part of the ministerial application. And then there would be a determination of, of, you know, if somebody said, well, I can't, you know, I can't fit... know, I can't fit an 800-square-foot unit in here if I were to comply with your lot coverage limitation, so I need you to waive your, you know, if it, you know, 35% lot coverage limitation in the R10, up to be, you know, this amount, 40, you know, let's say hypothetically 40%, in order to get my 800-square-foot unit." And then it would have to just be, you know, administrative decision. Go ahead.
Let me jump in first. I think you're first asking about what's the process for requesting a waiver, and the, is that correct?
Well, okay, so, it's, I mean, if, if these things are available to an applicant, then all the other stuff we're talking about is out the window, because the applicant said, "I don't want to have to do that."
Oh, so, okay, so I, I, that, that is a situation in some cases for when you're doing like a density bonus application for multifamily residential, where there's what I kind of informally call freebie variances. That's not the case here. What, the case is here is that they have to follow our standards, but if our, you know, zoning requirements, our development standards, make it physically infeasible or physically impossible to actually fit at least two 800-square-foot units on the property, then they can say, "Hey, I need a waiver of these standards." And under state law, it's just kind of wide open that, you know, they, we just have to grant waivers as necessary to allow that. What we are proposing here, and this is actually based on a neighboring jurisdiction, I once thought it was a really good idea, I came upon it after the Planning Commission study session, is to establish the order in which waivers can be requested. In other words, the order of development standards, basically starting with what's least important, or in our recommendation, what we would feel would be least important that could be most easily waived to the hardest for the city to accept essentially. And you, basically, the developer, if you, could you bring up the slide that's got the list?
Sure.
The builder would, and that laptop's running really slow today, apparently. Oh, they're, oh no, it's just Zoom is really slow, it's fast up there, okay. So essentially, if the, if the applicant can, you know, make the case to the planning manager that, hey, that with all the rules in place, it is physically infeasible to build the minimum that I'm allowed under SB nine, then we would result, we would refer to this list and say, "Okay, well, we can waive the requirement regarding the placement of mailboxes." And honestly, that's probably not going to do much of anything. So then, next, okay, well, location of exterior entrances for if it's attached to SB nine, again, probably not going to affect it. Okay, distance between buildings, in most of our single-family zones, there's a requirement for five-foot separation between buildings. Does that make it feasible? Nope. Okay, lot coverage, let's waive the lot coverage requirement. Bingo, that makes, that's enough, right, we can do it. Okay, great. They still then have to comply with the tree preservation, hillside performance, all the setbacks, the height, and all the rest of those down below.
I get that, and I get the priority notion here, is, can the applicant, other than the physical geometrical accommodation on a lot, can they complain about it not being economically feasible?
They can complain about it, but we would not be able to take action on it based on that.
So economical feasibility is not a valid support for asking for a waiver. It's just really the geometry.
It's, it's physical preclusion.
I can't get the box on here because of those requirements, so you're going to have to let me do some things different than the requirements, because I can't put the box on there.
It's, the state law, the exact wording in the state law is physically precludes the development of the units, and that's the same language as what's in the draft ordinance. And most cases, that probably is just going to be a simple geometric, you know, question. There could be other factors, like, you know, if there's an earthquake fault, that you're not allowed to build over a fault trace, or there's a creek in the way, that kind of a thing, and, okay, so we have to waive some of these things. Maybe that's when setback waivers, you know, you get down the list of that before it's feasible.
One thing we talked about, or I don't remember, recall if we talked about it, but how does the hillside ordinance play into all this stuff?
So what's in the interim ordinance and in the recommended draft ordinance is actually the same as what's in our ADU regulations, which is, we basically took the, and actually to back up for everybody's benefit, so we have a hillside portion in the zoning ordinance called Hillside Performance Standards. Basically, anytime you're doing construction in a residential zone, with some exceptions, where the average slope is greater than 15%, that's 15 feet of rise over 100 feet of run. If it's steeper than that, these rules apply, and there's a special review process that requires a public hearing at the zoning administrator. It's sort of, you could think of it as like, almost like hillside design review, but it's different findings, criteria. And that's special approval and subject to special rules about being on riz lines and protected trees and any number, you know, protecting rock outcroppings, those all apply. We cannot apply, the city is not allowed under state law to apply a subjective process and standard like that to ADUs and SB nine units and some other things as well. So what's in the draft ordinance here, and as I mentioned, is in the interim and the ADU ordinance as well, is we basically took those subjective standards that would normally be reviewed by the zoning administrator at a public hearing, and as much as could be done and still preserve them, converted them to objective numeric standards. So, you know, there's a, as an example, one of the criteria under the subjective process is, I forget the exact wording, but it's basically, you really shouldn't build on anything more than a 30% slope. In the objective standards for ADUs and proposed for SB nine, it just says, "You shall not build on more than a 30% slope."
Thank you.
I wanted to jump in on Commissioner Pickett's question. So I, I don't see anything on point, but I would say that I don't think there's any other area in development in the city where the city regulates bedroom count. So we regulate setbacks and lot coverage, et cetera, and so I'd be hesitant to, and none of our objective design standards to date address bedroom count. It's the, to use your phrase a few minutes ago, it's the geometry of the structure and where it sits on the parcel. And so I would be hesitant to regulate bedroom count.
Well, in the table, it is suggesting that our criteria for size is a function of bedroom count, and not just the physical size of the unit. So I guess my inclination is to avoid that, but we'll get into that discussion. That's, thank you.
Can I throw a complication to that question? So we're talking about being able to fit two 800-square-foot units on an SB nine lot. If you, if you want to apply SB nine to your lot, but there also, there already happens to be somewhere in the lot, a 2,000-square-foot home, it's been there for 30 years. But SB nine will allow you to build a second 800-square-foot unit. If, if you're geometrically precluded from building an 800-square-foot unit, considering that you already have the 2,000-square-foot unit there, that has the same ability to waive issues?
As the ordinance is, is written, and I'm going to actually double-check this, but as, I should say, as the draft ordinance is, is written, and as I believe the interim regulations are as well, the, it's just two up to 800-square-foot units. So in theory, if you've basically gobbled up all of the property on your land by building a giant house, reducing the size of that house or converting it into a duplex would be your way of achieving, you know, maximum number of units under SB nine. And of course, you could also just do an ADU where there's a lot of, a lot more waivers under state law that are automatic.
Okay, any other questions? Guys need to look alive here. All of us. Okay, so now is the time for public comment. I think we have some people. Yay, it's your turn. Thank you for waiting, we appreciate it.
I thought the other one was going to get heated, I knew this one wasn't going to get heated.
This is good, we're, we're good.
I'm Aaron Williams, I live in the city, work in the city. I'm the only one with a building permit on SB nine right now to the city, and I've been working with Andy and Community Development Director, and they've been doing, they've been helping me out navigate this thing like crazy, because it's, it's different, it's weird. I'm also an architect by trade, so I kind of understand it, so it's going to be really hard for people to understand it that are trying to go through it. But I do support the, your guys' findings from the study, I wasn't here last, last month, but I do support it. There's nothing in there that I don't think is good. It's going to support, it's going to help promote these and create flexible options, but not over-promote them. You know, these aren't the neighborhood killers that a lot of people thought they were going to be, by the fact that it's been, been available for two years and I'm the only one that has the building permit. So I like the flexibility of the fee, the impact fees, that was my main concern. These are affordable units, they're 800 square feet, and this gives away with it. When I was designing them, it was real hard to put in a covered parking and still meet the, the, the physical, that you could still put it on there, right? That was, that was really hard. And it's going to, if you kept that in there, if you kept the covered parking, all of a sudden, you're going to have four-car garages in the front of your yards, right? So it's going to, that's going to ruin the neighborhood more than anything. Or you're going to have these little tent structures people buy at Harbor Freight in their front yard to do it, like, so it's good that, get rid of that. The, the two parking spaces on the, on the, on the property are fine. I don't think it's really needed, because the only area where, neighborhood in Walnut Creek that we really have compaction of parking is Creekside, and you can't do those in that zoning anyway, so. But it's totally fine to keep that. And to answer Mr. Pickett's question about the waivers and the priority of it, when I was going through the design, it was really hard to understand which ones I can ignore and which ones can't. So I had a bunch of trees on my lot, so I was like, "Okay, I can go two stories immediately, because I can't take care of, I can't remove the trees," right? So it was like a priority thing, and so I asked Andy like a year and a half ago about, "Well, what is your guys' priority? Which ones do you want to see more than others?" So it is helpful to have a list in there. I do suggest probably raising the, the two-story limit lower on the list to like nine or 10, because it did look like on the, the survey, that was a lot of people's issues, but it doesn't bother me. But that's it. But I do want to say thank you for all your help trying to navigate everything.
Great, thank you for your comments. I thought that we had suggested one parking space that was uncovered.
Yes.
Two, okay.
Oh, it's one per unit.
One.
For the SB nine units, yeah, the draft ordinance does propose one parking space uncovered for the, per SB nine unit.
Oh, so one covered, one uncovered.
Just one uncovered.
For both units.
One each, right?
So for the primary existing house, it's still the two covered spaces, but anything new built under SB nine, so SB nine dwelling units, each unit would be one uncovered space, full stop.
So, so reading that, that would mean you would have the, your existing two-car garage and possibly two parking spots in your front yard, right? Or on the side yard, or however they're going to split it. It's kind of odd, if you think about it. I can make it work on my property, but it could be weird, all of a sudden you see all these cars and people's front houses, so. Better to put them on the street. And these are, these are small units, so most people are going to be riding bikes.
Okay, thank you for your comment, appreciate it. Do we have anybody else, Andy?
No, we have nobody attending via Zoom, and I, there we go. I, I was looking through our draft ordinance and to, I actually answered Commissioner Pickett's question incorrectly, so I do want to correct that. With regard to the exceptions due to physical preclusion, having an existing large house on the property, if the property is gobbled up by an existing big house, and you can't fit that eight, a second 800-square-foot unit, you can get waivers for that second 800-square-foot unit. So you would not be forced to reduce the size of the primary dwelling.
All right, so now, I guess technically we're closing the hearing, because we've had public comment, and so now I would like to go through the alternatives and decide on those, so that we can make a recommendation and vote eventually. So I think we need help, so maybe Heather can come back and guide us through the slides that give us our choices, because we're visual learners here, and we need to have the slide in front of us that shows our options.
Okay, go back to the beginning here. Okay. So, alternative one is that for both units on a property, the allowable size would depend on whether or not they meet setbacks. Actually, further, that, that all buildings on the property meet standard setback for the type of building that they are. That contrasts with alternative two, where the first unit can be any size, any floor area, as long as it meets the standard setbacks, or, but, or all, all buildings on the lot do. But the second unit on a lot is automatically subject to a size limit, whether or not it meets the setbacks. So maybe I should stop there before we go into the second part.
Yeah, I think we pick one or two, and then we'll pick the subparts based on what we decide. So, okay, so we could start with like a little straw poll, or we could have a lot of conversation? Well, Commissioner Anderson has.
I don't understand alternative one. I thought I did, but alternative one is both dwelling units are not limited in size as long as they meet the setbacks.
Yes.
And I would add that as long as everything on the property meets setbacks and lot coverage.
Right, right. But then we have alternatives 1A, 1B, and 1C, and all of the limitations on the size for the second unit.
Those would be, so then, if you have a unit on the property that meet, that meets, that does not meet the zoning setbacks, the setbacks of the zoning district, say you're got your 20, 20-foot front setback, or front setback, your 15-foot rear, and then on the side, you have a requirement of, most, most of the districts have a requirement of five feet minimum and 15 feet cumulative, so that comes out to like five on one side and 10 on the other side. So those are your standard zoning setbacks. Now SB nine says that the maximum that a city can require for a setback on your interior and your rear is four feet, so people are allowed to build an SB nine unit in that area between what the city requires for a setback and what the state requires. So it's not a question of can you build a unit, it's how big of a unit can you build in that area that is the difference between what the zoning district, the city zoning district requires and what the state allows.
So, I think I may...
Does that, does that help?
I think I may have solved my own confusion here.
It's confusing.
What I just read on alternative one, that's the first paragraph, alternative, alternative on paragraph two, so deals of what, when it does not comply with the standard setbacks. And that's what 1A, B, and C apply to.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
So it's sort of like, your first home is your main home, and then your second home, and they're both, the second one is your SB nine, smaller.
Okay, any other questions? All right, so I guess let's do a straw poll and just see one versus two, and then, oh, Commissioner Leevak, you're vote, are you voting, or are you?
I'm voting, yeah, I'm just giving you...
Okay, so everybody, everybody, okay, this is a straw poll. Everybody in favor of alternative one, just raise your hand.
Raise your hand? Sorry.
Yes.
Sure, and, yeah, so...
This is like the eye doctor, you know.
I, I, so much anxiety about that, I have to say. I don't know whether it's better or worse, okay?
And maybe it helps also to say that when we were talking last time about, "Let the zoning govern," or that was, that was one comment that I heard, is, "Let the zoning district standards govern." That's sort of this alternative one. And alternative two is, for your, your first unit, let the, let the zoning district standards govern, your second unit on a single-family lot, as allowed under SB nine, is automatically going to be smaller, whether or not it meets the standard setback. So it could meet all of the setbacks of the district, but it still would need to, you know, adhere to a size limit that you set. So it's going to be a smaller unit, it's not going to be an unlimited floor area unit, no matter where it's placed on the lot. Does that help? Okay.
Okay, all right, so let's put one back up, and we're going to just do a little straw poll, and then... poll and then, and then, and then people can comment.
Okay.
Oh, you're straw polling.
Yeah.
We're straw polling. All right, so everybody in favor of alternative one, just raise your hand. Okay. Um, all right, well, that's pretty clear, but, um, Vice Chair Strongman, you want-
My comment is that I don't really want to see two McMansions on one lot.
That'd be a pretty darn big lot if they were gonna be able to do that, so.
I agree.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, all right, so it seems that we have, um, selected alternative one pretty definitively, so if we can go to the subaltern, suboptions.
So, this, yeah, this again is for your, your unit that does not meet your standard setbacks, but does have at least four feet from the side and rear.
And lot coverage.
Yes.
All of the, and it's not just that the unit-
Right.
Sorry, I didn't have my mic on. Th- this is for any SB, it, it, this, this would be floor area limitations for SB nine units if any building on the property does not meet the su- standard setback and standard lot coverage, uh, requirements.
Okay. All right, so what's suboption B?
So B is a wider range and slightly more floor area than the ADUs. Um, so instead of the ADU, uh, maximum only goes up to 1,000 square feet, and, and under this option, if you have, uh, 20,000-square-foot or more lot, you could build up to 1,400 square feet. If you have a 15,000 to almost 20,000-square-foot lot, you could build 1,200. You could build 1,100 if you have, you know, 12 to almost 15, and, and so on, you can see it. And then, um-
And again, the suboption only applies if the setback requirements are not met.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, and then one C is a different sliding scale?
Yes, it's a different sliding scale, um, based on number of bedrooms, um, the thinking being that, um, you wanna allow more floor area if you're creating, um, family housing units, like three or more bedroom units, um, are in demand, especially, you know, affordable, three and four-bedroom units are in demand. Um, so, you know, allowing more floor area for, um, if you're also providing more bedrooms, rather than just having a gigantic place but not having more bedrooms, so.
But again, the, the other, um, the height limitations are separate and they would apply to, and it doesn't, it doesn't meet the setback requirement.
Yeah, the height limits just apply, um, unless they have to be waived because you otherwise couldn't build an 800s-
That's like number nine of 12 or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Um, okay, so, um, I guess it's a little, it's a little harder to do a straw poll with three as opposed to two, but, um, let's give it a shot anyway. So, we'll start with one A, so everyone in favor for the suboption?
Just before you do that, I, I can't really vote on one without expressing my opinion, so I don't know when you want opinions.
Yeah. I guess now, now would be the time for your opinion, but you have to turn your mic on if you're gonna have an opinion.
You might prefer that I don't turn it on, till you hear what I say.
I, I just want the mic on if you're gonna be talking, so, go ahead.
Okay, um, and I, and I said this in our last meeting, but I, I think it is our obligation to the residents of Walnut Creek to protect the single-family neighborhoods that they bought into, and I think SB nine flies in the face of that. But being that we can't, uh, overcome our draconian state government, um, I'm leaning towards the more conservative of the options. Last time I did say that I would remain open-minded, though. And so, um, although I would prefer the A option, which is, appears to be the most restrictive, um, I would consider the B option, provided that we didn't go as big as 1,400 feet. I think the sliding scale goes a little too far on a 20,000-foot lot, but, um, that's my opinion.
Okay, do we have any other comments with regard to this before we try to vote? Yes, I mean, not really vote-vote, we're kind of half-voting.
Um, the, the question of the bedrooms came up, um, and, I mean, my feeling is that, um, bedrooms are in the mind of the beholder. Um, you know, we downsized from a three-bedroom house to a four-bedroom house. It's much smaller, um, but it had four things, reliable bedrooms. Now, we only have beds and two of them, um, you know, but we've sometimes had, been using three rooms as bedrooms. You know, it just sort of depends on what you call them. And, you know, I'm not sure that it really matters a whole lot, how you divide up the space inside. So, th- that's just an argument for, uh, alternative one B instead of alternative one C.
Okay, anybody else? Commissioner Lezak.
So, Andy, thank you for C, which speaks to the, the affordability by design concept. Uh, Andy and I talked a little bit about this today because, uh, I, I really got comfortable with the idea of waiving, uh, the, the affordable in Luffy, because the concept is these are affordable by design, and if they really are of that size, I thought that was a, a great concept to talk about. Uh, but I really don't like C, because, uh, A and C both speak to this bedroom count thing that was just discussed, and I think, you know, in response also to the survey, you know, we need to try to come up with a way to keep this as simple as possible. And I felt like bedroom count is more complicated and some of these other things are complicated. Um, I liked the idea that A was consistent with the ADU policy, but at the end of the day, I felt like B was the simplest and I liked it, uh, because it didn't have the bedroom count. And, and Bob, a 20,000-square-foot lot's still big enough that a 14, a 1,400-square-feet house is not a McMansion. It, even though I live in a 1,400-square-foot house, so it's really, I think of it as a McMansion, but, um, yes. Um, but I'll, I'll tell you that I, I, I am in favor of B as, as it is for all of those reasons, thank you.
All right, any other comments? Okay, since, um, you know, I have the mic and I'm like drunk with power, you know, being the chair, we're gonna vote, do our same straw poll, but we're gonna start with alternative B, so everybody who is in favor of alternative one B, raise your hand.
B.
One B.
As a boy.
Okay, so that's everybody, so that-
There you go.
There it is.
Be official.
Okay, so, um, all right, so it, there, there's no other choice decision making we have to make unless there is somebody who objects to one of the, um, stated recommendations on the part of the staff in the resolutions.
Just a quick question, one of the comments from our, um, correspondence was that we need to mention, by the way, there's CCNRs. Is there a way we can inject that to beware of CCNRs?
I, I, I mean, the, oh, no, I was, I mean, there's-
HOA attorney twitching her, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's nothing that says, you know, I mean, i- i- there's nothing that says that basically we can't just put a thing in the, in the, in the ordinance that says, we'd really like you to be kind to your neighbors and your HOA. Uh, I mean, there's nothing legally preventing us from doing that. However, it does put the city in a somewhat, shall I say, uncomfortable position in that HOAs and CCNRs are mentioned and referenced in the ordinance or would be under that, but the city actually has no ability, no legal authority to enforce them. Um, and so I wouldn't want to give, uh, you know, members of the public any false hope, if you will, that because it's mentioned in the ordinance that we can somehow do anything about it.
Okay.
And I would be not in favor of any sort of reference with that. There's, there's significant problematic issues with SB nine and whether they apply to HOAs at all at this point. It's not clear, and I would not want to muddy that water any further by putting something in our ordinance that would make that situation even worse, so. Since we don't have to, I don't want to.
Okay.
That's my opinion. Um, okay, so we have, um, we have made our straw poll decision with regard to the option and the, the alternative and the suboption, and now if there are any comments, which I, I know Commissioner Lezak has one, just let me finish the sentence of what we're doing here. Um, if there are any staff recommendations that people would like to discuss or have issues with, now is the time to bring them up.
So I had one that came up in the slide presentation that I'm not sure that I picked up in the, in the staff report, and that had to do with this new idea that, that we would limit the total number of units on a split lot to two, and therefore, if you built two, you were then limited, uh, you couldn't then have an ADU or a JADU. And I heard that, though I didn't understand that in any of the previous documentation, and I interpreted that to be inconsistent with ADU law. And so, I object to that because of that, and also I think everybody should have eight lots, eight units on their lot. Actually, you couldn't have a J, two JADUs, 'cause you gotta have the intent to live in one and you have to have a restriction to live in your J, anyway, never mind.
Owner occupancy.
Yes, but, but I, I just, I just felt like that was inconsistent with ADU law and I didn't think that that was appropriate, so.
Let me, I, I'm, I was gonna say, let me provide a little clarity, but I'll admit, I'm actually a little bit confused right at the moment, and I'm hoping I'm speaking to what you're talking about, but our existing interim ordinance simply says that when you have a, an urban lot split, you cannot have ADUs or JADUs on either of the lots. Um, and that was based on our early reading of the law when we were very hurriedly putting together the interim ordinance. Since then, we've read it more closely and this, what, what SB nine actually says is that the city can limit each resulting lot from an urban lot split to no more than two units, in whatever form those two units may take. So SB nine units, existing homes, ADUs, JADUs. And so what we're recommending is that the draft, or, in the draft ordinance, that that language be corrected to be consistent with what we're allowed to do under state law, just that you're limited to two units in whatever per urban lot split lot, um, in whatever form they may be.
And, and, and again, that was language that I don't agree with.
That is language that I do agree with.
Commissioner Lezak, do you mean you don't agree with the interpretation of what's allowed, or you don't like it?
I, I don't like it. I wouldn't be that clear in, in our ordinance to, to say that, and apparently Bob would. So, um, it's just, there's just a point of, you know, disagreement on that one particular issue, which was just new, it wasn't discussed at the last meeting, that's all.
Are, are you proposing a change to, to that, that you'd like us to?
Yeah, I mean, I, I personally would propose to just not include that language and didn't see it in the staff report previously, so it was kind of new to me and that's why I brought it up.
Okay, so let's do a vote. Um, who would like to leave this section as-is as the staff report suggests? Everybody wants to leave it as-is, raise your hand. Okay. All right, so that's five. Okay. Um, all right, are there any other, any other sections in the staff recommendations that you would like to discuss? Yes, Commissioner Anderson?
Uh, just a thought on the, on the waivers, the order of waivers, don't want to get into, like, the rearranging of them, but I'm, uh, my thought was that, um, if you're going to have additional units, um, on, on single-family lots, um, uh, preservation of trees would be an important thing if you want to keep the look of the neighborhood the same. People put in second units or third or fourth units on a lot and cut down the trees, um, that's gonna make a much bigger impact than just putting the unit in there. So I would move it down at least a couple of spots in the, in the waiver list.
But, you would, you would move it?
Move it to, uh-
Lower on the list, so-
Lower on the list, so it wouldn't, so you wouldn't get to, to taking out trees.
So you think it's more important than hillside performance standards or second-story windowsill height?
Uh, I would think so, yeah.
Isn't the waiver the other way around? It's, the, the last items on the list, the low, the, the higher the number on the list, the, the more important that is to the city in terms of something to preserve.
Right.
So you would move it further down?
Further down.
Okay, got it, okay.
I would agree with that.
I would, too.
So you're, you're saying it should go down to, um, it should swap with second-story sill window height? And it would be seven and hillside performance and second-story sills would bump up?
Yeah. Did, I heard you say swap. Is it just that you would move preservation of trees from its current perch?
No, I, I misspoke. We would move five to seven, and seven becomes six, and six becomes five.
Just move it down the list.
So, five to seven, so it would come after, preservation of trees would come after rear setback?
No, second-story windowsill height.
Oh.
So, a- actually, let me just ask, 'cause I think I saw on the slide, there were 11 on the list.
12.
12.
12, okay, I'm looking at one that just has four, 10, I'm sorry, 10.
10 is on the staff report, but the slide had 12.
The staff report has 10.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I missed eight.
Yes. So can we pull the slide back up so we can see it?
Oh, stop it.
There we go. I don't know why there's 11.
Apparently, I can't pull up attachment one.
Maybe, maybe corner side-
What's the one item that's off?
Two, there's two that are missing on the staff report.
It might be the exterior.
There's a second one, though, too.
Yeah.
Rear setback. Six and seven are not included on the staff report.
On the slide, there are two sixes. Um, this was a result of, where I thought I had made a mistake in the ordinance and then we realized, no, that's the ADU state law, and, anyway, I apologize, this was just a, this was a mistake.
Okay, so there's 12, there's 12 on the, the slide, but there's only 10 on the staff report, so it's the second, number six, and number seven, rear setback and interior side setback that are not included in the staff report list. But I think we still want to move, uh, preservation of trees from its position at number five to, um, down two slots. Um, nope, down three slots now. So it should go down to number, um, eight. Five should become eight, and then-
So rather than the numbers, since we've got mixed-up numbers, if you could just tell me-
Second-story windowsill height.
So we would give up second-story windowsill height?
Preservation of trees gets inserted, but after second-story windowsill height.
Gotcha.
And everything-
And everything else notches up.
Yes.
Gotcha, okay. So we, so what's being proposed is it would go second-story windowsill height, then preservation of trees, then maximum height?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
You can have as many sixes as you want, we don't care about that, so.
Six A, six B, six C.
You can only have two.
Sorry.
If you're gonna have two, you can have four.
So, you would, you guys would rather give up the hillside performance, performance standards over trees? And the reason I say that is 'cause the civil engineering me is like, ah!
I mean, I agree with you, but this is what's proposed, so.
Only because, can you describe, to, to me, usually hillside performance has to do with slopes, benches, whether it's a debris bench, um, I'm too tired right now, 'cause the three-year-old woke me up at 4:45 yesterday in the morning AM.
Were they still serving?
Milk, yes. So, that's all, that, 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 that's all I say is, trees are extremely important, but hillside performance standards, the structural aspects of those, that's my, my only, un- un- unless in the hillside performance it doesn't have any structural global stability, slope stability, if it has nothing of that in there, then I'd be like, okay.
So, um, I, I, and I'm happy to, to read some of this, but just for those, uh, if you want to follow in writing, I would actually suggest that you go to attachment two, which is the red-line version of going from our interim ordinance to what we're recommending being permanent, and then on page 17 of that, uh, section V, hillside performance standards, this is what is in the current ordinance and what we're recommending for the proposed, uh, page 17 of attachment two. 17 of Attachment Two.
Item V.
And the very first of the performance standards is, due to the high levels of risk of property damage and personal injury, there shall be no grading or construction of any kind on any portion of a site where the true slope exceeds 30%. So that, and that language is really taken from the existing subjective criteria that would otherwise apply under hillside performance standards, but that, I think, speaks to Commissioner Needing's concern over structural.
Aren't you saying that that would be waived?
That that, these would be waived under, when hillside performance standards are waived for physical preclusion purposes, these would be waived. Now, the units still have to, of course, comply with building code and all, you know, normal safety things, it's just rather than having a blanket prohibition on more than a 30% slope, they would have to, you know, engineer the building in such a way that it would still be safe and meet building code and the like.
Well, yeah, if it's on a slide, you can't build it, right? Can't get that waived, right?
Yeah, there's.
It says slope stability. Yeah, if you see Commissioner on number three, it says slope stability purposes.
If, if you wanted to move it back under, you know, below the trees, that's okay, because I think actually, if you've got a hillside lot, it's really steep, I don't think you're going to be worrying about second and third and fourth units.
I, I, yeah, it's.
Probably.
I would think so. I, I mean, I've designed uphill and downhill lots, and they're not, just the getting to them and having the, it's not easy. Sorry, I just, I'm.
So where would you recommend that we put hillside performance standards? Where do you want it? We've moved trees down, but where do you want to move that to?
I, I think it's okay where it is, I, I was just scared that it was getting too closer to one, where I would want to have it closer to 11, or 12. Where are we, number?
12, we have two sixes.
It's five now, out of 12.
To me, it's, the question is, how often do we have the need to preserve trees and hillside at the same time? We're, we're assuming that we're going to give up the trees and then do hillside.
It, it's very likely that the tree thing would kick in, mu- much more likely than the hillside performance standard. So that's the only reason why I'm not feeling that strongly about any of this, especially since it's fairly unlikely that anybody's going to do an SB nine split at all. So by the time you're done and, and you've got a hillside lot, and you got a tree on the hillside lot, you're probably not doing this, so.
And I will actually point out that the, one of the standards under the hillside performance standards is that you can't do any grading or construction within a distance one and a half times the distance from the trunk to the drip line. So that the, the preservation of trees standard for, in the, in the draft ordinance is you can't build within the drip line of a highly protected tree, which is, you know, certain oaks and, you know, native species over a certain size. Hillside performance standards say 150% of that, can't build in that. So that would actually make sense, just with regard to the tree preservation issue, that hillside performance standards would be waived first, because there it's, there's actually a buffer around the tree, whereas just tree preservation is, you just can't build under the tree.
Okay, thank you, that's a good clarification. All right, so let, so we've opted to move preservation of trees down below.
Second-story windowsill height.
Right. So let's take a little straw poll, does everyone agree with that reorganization of the order for waiving standards? If you do, raise your hand, please. Okay, so what's your concern still? I, I mean.
I, I haven't, I have no dog in this fight, I'm.
You're just, you're out.
I'm good either way, yeah.
You're done, okay. And, and you're sticking with your. Okay. All right, so is there any other, any other section in the staff report where staff has made recommendations that we'd like to discuss or modify in any way? Okay, is there any other thing that I need to do, like asking people to comment or something that I didn't do at this point?
No, you've done everything.
All right, I'd like to entertain.
I'd like to just thank Heather and Andy.
Yes.
And our chair for guiding us through this almost painlessly. I, I won't say I didn't go home with some bruises, but you've made it really a lot easier.
Yeah, really, really good report. No, we're, we're just mumbling now, but, yeah, so at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to, to memorialize these, the, the option.
I'll, I'll move, all that we've, I'll move all that we talked about.
Okay, so that's picking alternative one, option, sub option B, and changing the order for waiving standards, and moving the preservation of trees below second-story windowsill height, and other than that, everything that's recommended in the proposed resolution and staff report is the same.
Second.
Okay, so if the commission secretary could please record the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Reiser.
Yes.
Commissioner Needing.
Yes.
Commissioner Lezak.
Yes.
Commissioner Pickett.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Strongman.
Yes.
And Chair Ward.
Yes.
And motion carries.
Excellent. All right, again, I would also like to thank everybody for the amazing amount of work and education that you provided us with regard to this very complicated new legislation, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on to item five, commission considerations. Do we have any commission considerations?
No.
Okay, thank you. Item six, do we have any commission member and staff reports or announcements?
I will just say that in light of this meeting being, running so long and all the hard work, I have added a fifth Thursday to this month, which means that you have three weeks until the next plan commission hearing. You're welcome.
All right, well, with that, I would like to adjourn at 9:36. Thank you all very much, we'll see you in a while.